Good evening, it is 7:01 and I'd like to call to order this regular business meeting of the Newmarket School Board. We'll begin this meeting as we do all others with the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me in it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect, we have a sort of full agenda tonight, so we'll get started right away. I will open the floor for public comment, if anyone would like to make any comment they can feel free to come to the mic. Seeing that no one is racing to the mic, we will go ahead and close public comments and start with the agenda for the meeting. With the board's permission, I'd like to sort of modify things a little bit, we have a couple of visitors. We have Jennifer Dorr here to give us an audit of finances, we have Principal Mizouni here to talk about the program of studies and a Model UN field trip, and then we have Greg Marles on a variety of topics, so with your permission, I'd like to sort of modify things that way. Jennifer, if you'd like to open the meeting with your presentation, we'll start with you.
I'll just start with the exciting stuff. Good evening, I'm Jen Dorr, from Bashan Kuke, I'm the Audit, Senior Audit Manager for the Audit for the School District. We were out here earlier this fall, to do the audit, I'm not going to go through the financial statements page for page, it's long, it's there, the numbers are there. I do welcome any questions about the audit process, how the audit works, you know, I know some people have certain perceptions of how it goes, so if there's any questions, just feel free to holler, I will just kind of give a quick overview of it all. When we come out, we look at various classes, we look at important transactions, we look at risk. It's not just all about the numbers, it's really about what are the procedures that are in place and who's doing what and are those procedures being followed? And then we form our audit from there. So we do come out and do all those things, we look at student activity funds, we look at food service, we look at federal projects, you know, we really cover all of our bases, but we spend a lot of time in the riskier areas that we think and go through there. So the important parts of our report that we've gotten here is in the beginning, you've got your independent auditor's report, that was an unmodified opinion, which is the best that you can get, means that there were no internal control findings, no material weaknesses, to get deficiencies, anything along those lines, which is always what you want to strive for. You know, there's a management's discussion analysis in here, that's done by Lisa, so it's sort of a quick recap of the information that's in the financial statements, and then there's some economic factors information, why budget things were up, down, those types of things, so that's all prepared by her. And then you do have all your financial statements, I am going to real quickly point out on page one, it's Exhibit A, this is showing at the very bottom a total net position and it's saying negative $10 million, I don't want anybody freaking out and thinking, why, you know, what is this about? So this is sort of what we call real world accounting financial statements, and this has all of your liabilities on it, including these, all these new Gatsby unfunded liabilities that are coming out. So this is all the retirement system stuff that has been split up and allocated out to all of the member counties, towns, school districts, you name it, any political division that's in there. And what they do is they spread it out based on population and number, numbers. It's put on here, it's nothing you can fund, it's nothing you can pay off, it's just going to be there, probably it's supposed to go over 30 years until it gets repaid. So it's basically trying to cover all of the money that the retirement system needs to pay out its benefits that they've promised to people in the future. For this year, there was a new one called Gatsby 75, same idea, it's the medical subsidy piece that the retirement system used to have, where people could, when they retired, they got their health insurance paid, and it came through this medical subsidy through the retirement system. So it's the same idea as this pension liability, which is the retirement piece, that number got put on there this year, so that just keeps increasing that net position that's at the bottom. The number just keeps growing unfortunately. So that's the new ones, though we don't, there isn't any more on the forecast for now in the horizon, so hopefully that'll slow down. It did add significant more note information, there's significant, what we call required supplementary information in the back. It's just a lot of numbers, it's all done by actuaries. The retirement system hires an actuary, then there's a single employer piece, which is internally done here, that you've hired an actuary, they do a report, combine them together. It's a lot of numbers, it's a lot of information, so, there's a lot in here about that this year. So I just didn't want anybody to look at this negative $10 million and think, okay, what's happening? Exhibits C and D, which are pages three and four, are much more what you would normally see, what you'd be used to seeing in your financial statements. And towards, and then there's a lot of the footnotes, which is all the stuff in the middle, this is just a lot of supporting information about the financial statements. And then, like I said, there's all these required supplementary documents. Some of the separate letters that you have, there's one, it's just a one-page letter, this is the internal control letter that basically says that we didn't find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We can't guarantee that there aren't any, but based on our audit work, I mean, we can't look at everything 100%, we would be here a lot longer than the few days that we're here during the week. The other letter is what we call a governance letter, this is like the three or four-page one. This is just a standard document that says what our responsibilities were, what management's responsibilities were, if we had any disagreements, if there was any material adjustments. It's all summarized in this three-page letter here. And the last one is what we call a management recommendation letter. This is strictly an internal letter for the board, for the management, when we go through our audits, we look to see if there's any recommendations that we see. We don't think that they warrant being an internal control issue, but we do want, you know, just to say, hey, there's some areas that are suggested. So we did have one, again, it was on payroll documentation, we had a couple of instances where maybe there was a stipend that wasn't necessarily documented, that that was the approved, you know, $500 or whatever they were going to get. And then some time card issues, which with school districts, we run into a lot, it's hard, there's a lot of employees and a lot of, you know, work to get done real quickly in a short period of time to get the payroll out. Sometimes that the, you know, whether it's a supervisor level, time cards aren't getting really examined real well, so they're pretty adding errors, that type of thing. So it's just a matter of just really trying to, you know, make it really important to the people that are signing off, saying, yes, the employee's turned this into me and I'm approving it. Just really double checking and just making sure that the math is there, because there is human error. You'd be amazed at the issues that people can't fill out a time card. So, we see it a lot, it's been an ongoing issue. So that was really our only recommendation there, is just, you know, making sure there's files, documents, everybody, what everybody's getting paid. So that if a question ever arose, like, hey, why am I getting this, you could say, it's right here, you signed it, I signed it, you know.
I was just going to add, and Lisa, you can certainly chime in, but I think it's one of the reasons that we've been talking about moving to an electronic time card system, because it will reduce that human error.
That was going to be my question, because we had an electronic one.
It reduces it at least at one level, right, the employee is not going to make an error, no one's then, the supervisor still has to check it, but there's not an additional reconciliation piece that's happening, and right now, a lot of that happens manually, which again, just creates additional opportunities for error. That said, it is one more piece of implementation. So you can speak to that perhaps, I think Lisa's hopeful that we'll be able to have that in place for next year, but.
At what price?
It's built into EnCo, the software we have, we're just not utilizing that module.
Yeah, and the one that we had was correction only, so that if somebody was there full-time and there didn't have to be any notation of sick leave or leave without pay or anything like that.
We're not pulled to an exception only, and I think that's what you're talking about.
Right, that's probably what it was called, I didn't have to fill it out.
What's the best, yes, yeah.
Yeah, we see a lot more, we see a lot of districts going sort of that electronic, just the time card. I mean, it's hard in a school district, you've got a lot of employees, you know, depending on the size of your district, you could have a significant number of employees, and that's a lot for, you know, one person sitting in the payroll department, trying to, you know, really quickly get through those and make sure, you know, that what she's seeing.
We have one of our principals here, and he could probably attest to, he's got to sign them every week, every two weeks.
Right, so, you know, it's a lot, and it helps, I mean, and like Lisa said, I maybe don't necessarily recommend going towards the exception only thing, just because of some of your grant requirements, you do have to have it, you know, showing that so-and-so worked on, you know, certain hours and that are like to the IDA grant or whatever. So, you know, it's probably better to have more than less as far as.
We've worked hard to assist people in a good direction, it's moving in a positive direction.
And we did, like I said, we looked at student activity funds, we didn't have any issues there, we do, you know, spot check, we pull a handful of transactions, deposits, and dispersments, just to see if we think it's an important area, whether, you know, it's not really the district's money, but where it's the student's money, we think that's very important and certainly not an area that we let go by. And we do some, even though you're not required to have the federal single audit grant requirements tested anymore, we do a small piece. We will still look at sampling up, just to make sure that compliance is still being done, we just don't have to do the full-blown uniform guidance work, because you're under the threshold now. Any other questions about the audit? There's no new standards coming, so next year should be nice and easy and.
Jennifer, the report indicates it doesn't express an opinion on the district's internal control, but it mentions on, I think it's the second page, I might have put them out of order, it's February 1st. It says there was a separate report dated January 31st, they continue.
Oh, that should say, that should say February 1st, we had a, we changed the date on something when Lisa sent me the final rep letter. She sent it to me on the 31st, it was dated the first, that should be the same.
Is that in our packet, that report?
Yes, so the separate report on the internal, that's the one-page letter.
Okay.
That's the one page that says report on internal control at the top, we have that one.
It was emailed out. It should have been in the pack.
Is it in the packet?
Yeah, it's just a one-page single letter that says report on internal control based on audit basis.
It was in the email.
Yeah, it was in the email.
This would be my question, should the district be doing an internal control review periodically?
I think it's always important to be looking at your procedures that are in place, I don't think, it doesn't need to be, you don't need to go in and do a full test, but it's always good to review policies and procedures that are in place, especially as technology's changing. You know, sometimes you'll look back at deposits and be like, okay, you know, we're not, we don't have the handwritten vouchers and those things anymore, sometimes it needs to be updated and looked at. But it's, you know, it's never a bad idea every few years to check and just.
And I think the fact that we've had new employees has really given us that opportunity to test all of that, right, Lisa was new. We brought on another new employee to do AP this year, we've had new employees doing student activities in both buildings over the year one and year three, so, and that really is happening.
And we do test controls, I mean, we say that we don't do an opinion on it, we do test controls, I mean, that's sort of what I was saying, we find out, what are your written policies? What's actually happening, are you following those, and we do a rotating basis, so we'll pull a sample of 40, you know, on a rotating basis. And if something changes, you get a new payroll person, you get a new AP person, we will do a full test again, if somebody new is in that place, just to make sure that the same things are still happening.
So how do we know if our internal controls are adequate and up to date and all of that?
So during our testing, if we ever, if we had an issue and we thought it warranted, it was serious enough, so if it was, you know, full-blown, you know, no approvals on anything, it would be in here, this letter would be different, it wouldn't be one page anymore. It would have findings, we would say, you know, whether we thought it was a significant deficiency or material weakness is the worst, that's like, okay, it's bad and it's material affecting the numbers that are in your financial statements.
Sorry, this is the lawyer in me, I'm going to drill down a little bit more, so, but you're not checking all controls when you do.
We test major financial transactions, so we do payroll, we do cash dispersments, and we do receipts.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we do the major areas, I mean, we're not, like I said, we can't look at everything 100%, so we do a sampling, we do, you know, risk-based, and we do a sampling, so.
Do you ever get requests to come in, and I'm not talking here, just in general, maybe not even school districts, other businesses?
We do them in towns, we'll do them everywhere, you know, they might have a rep camp somewhere that they're like, hey, you know, it's a little off-site, they've got a lot of cash going through there, can we set up a separate procedure, you know, this year as part of the audit? And when we send, when we do the beginning of the, at the beginning of audit, we will send forms out, questionnaires, and so if there's ever an area that somebody on the board or anybody thinks is an area of concern that you want us to look at more, then, you know, we can do that, but, yeah, we do have requests, you know, we'll look at transfer stations in a town, or we'll, you know.
It doesn't come from any particular concern, just from lay knowledge and.
Yeah, but just so that, right, so you know what's out there.
And my position as a business administrator, having oversight for that, if I see something that isn't getting traction, I'm trying to have people follow a certain policy or procedure and I'm not getting traction, I'll engage the auditors when they come out, hey, can you look a little closer at that area? And help, help me see if everything's, you know, running as good as it can be.
I had a school district last year that they, they knew, they were, people were filling out purchase orders after the fact. They were ordering what they needed and then they were going in and making sure the purchase order was filling, I mean, it happens, you know, something needs to be done. And so he had us come and say, I need you to look at all the departments, and we did sampling based on the number of transactions in each department, and we did a test, it was significant, it was over 100 transactions, that we tested, hey, when did you get the goods, when did you do your purchase order, and we did sort of a separate control report on that.
Yeah, because I, because I, working with many auditors and many years, know, you know, the best practices, and if I, what I meant by not getting traction is something like that, if I see something that I'm not being heard.
Yeah, management finds sometimes it helps when they can say, hey, the auditor says, the auditor said we need to, you know, this isn't working, or we need, you know, sometimes they need an outside person to kind of, like you said, get some traction.
So I appreciate the audit myself.
Yeah, anytime there's any concern ever, we can.
It's very timely, because our policy review, our second reading this, this week is for all of our, our audit and our petty cash and all of our.
Yep.
All of our financials.
Yep.
It's all part of our second reading today, so.
I have two questions, one with Lisa and one of you. Lisa, on the, when the audit finds things like, oh, was it not added up correctly or whatever, do we go back and fix it? Do we go back and reimburse the employee or?
Well, fortunately, anything they found hasn't required that we do that, it was.
Oh, I thought she said there were math errors.
Yes, but.
To the employee's benefit.
But they were compensated properly in the end, so, in the end, the document behind that didn't add up, but the person wasn't. To answer your question, yes, we would, we haven't needed to, and even the stipend, the person was compensated properly based on the draft that went out. We never got the signed sheet back.
And that was.
So, how do we know the person truly acknowledged that that's what they were to be paid, so it's things like that.
You've answered my question.
But yes.
It's not that they got an extra 15 hours or.
Yeah, okay.
Or shortchanged, it was nothing like that, or shortchanged, yes.
My question is on page 35, and it's one I've studied for years, and that's the, the unfunded liability for Newmarket, or pension liability went from 15 million down to 14.5, and I'm curious why that happened, because the payroll stayed about the same.
Well, it's going to go down based on as other, I mean, it's, as a whole, so every year, the NHS puts out a new report, and they, their KPMG comes in and does their allocation. So it's, on a whole, it's, was the liability 43, I think it's billion, billion?
Something like that.
I think it's billions, and they allocate it, the actual NPL.
It's five, it's $5 billion.
Right, so then it, yes.
That's New Hampshire.
Yes, that's the number.
Okay.
So then, so based on as rates are going up, so they've jumped your rates up, so then more's going in, so they're helping to pay off some of that liability, so then every year, they're reallocating, you know, you could have more people in the plan, you could have less people, it fluctuates every year. We hope to continue to see it go down.
And that's what their goal is, right, if retirement is trying to reduce that over time.
Yeah, and they look at discount rates, and so the rates changed this year, they went down to seven and a quarter percent, so, you know, they're always sort of manipulating things based on the market.
It was also a bill presented, I think, this past week on reintroducing state contributions to the pension funds, which is significant, it's going to be a big deal to us.
Yeah, that was a huge hit to the town since schools will may take that one.
Huge hit.
Yeah, because they used to do the 25%.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Chris, we'll have you go next, I think we have some visitors for the UN presentation, am I right? I wish that, I was going to suggest that same, same thing, Michaela, come on up if you would like. Board members were talking about the field trip approval request for the Model UN, United Nations trip to Philadelphia, I believe, if I read correctly.
Hi, so I'm here on behalf of Newmarket High School's Model United Nations delegation. We were awarded a scholarship from the Institute of Domestic and International Affairs to attend their conference in Philadelphia. Model United Nations is an educational simulation and academic activity in which students learn about diplomacy, international relations, and the United Nations. We have been created, well, we've been going for a year, a club, we've attended conferences at UNH and Phillips Exeter Academy, and we're excited with this scholarship that we will be able to attend an out-of-the-state four-day conference in Philadelphia. For the conference, we were assigned several topics, including counterterrorism, feminization of poverty, human rights. We will be representing Turkey, Kazakhstan, and Venezuela at the conference. So the dates of the conference are February 28th to March 3rd, we have 11 students attending. We'll be staying at the Windham for the duration of the conference, we have preserved four hotel rooms and one hotel room for our advisor in addition. We hope to rent a 12-person van from Enterprise, and we will be using that van to go to and from Philadelphia and back to Newmarket. Our other alternative would be to have our chaperones drive us down, that one's still being worked out. And, so we're excited to go, so our scholarship was for $2,857, that's a huge chunk of money, and then we'll be able to pay that money for the Enterprise van.
One question that I had, Michaela, I don't think you know the answer, because this did not come from you, but at the end of the memo, it says.
It lost a sentence.
The last sentence got, got cut off. It says, everyone from our blank, and I'm assuming it means that everyone can go.
Yes, it would, everyone from their group was going to pay $100, it's the line that wound up on page two.
Okay, we currently have 650 on the bank account to pay for the rental car and gas.
Okay, so perfect.
Yeah.
But I didn't want to say it. You know, for those of you that don't know, the Model UN is an excellent program for students thinking globally about a variety of topics. And Michaela, the topics that you discussed are ones that are on the forefront of the world.
Yeah.
And I, for one, support this opportunity to go do it, and if no, I seek a motion to approve this, yes, Mary?
I was just going to add, so Michaela mentioned they were talking about one chaperone with 11 students in a van.
Okay.
For me, that gives me pause, in that I think it's best practice to have a couple of adults available, just in case of an emergency or other situation. So that, that's one of the issues that they've been working on and are trying to resolve.
Yes, trying to.
And, in addition, we've talked about chaperones of each gender, again, just for best practice.
I agree with that completely, my question would be, what's the best course of action, should we wait for an additional proposal with that or can we go ahead?
There's no time, they need to know.
One more question.
Yes.
So don't we own a van, don't we own?
No.
Mr. Pletus, didn't he donate a van to the school?
No.
So what's the rec van that sits out front?
So we've looked into renting it.
Linked together has a van, and rec has a van.
They said they won't let us, it's too far of a trip for the van to work.
The van won't go that far.
The van won't go that far.
Reliably.
They're like, not possible, it'll break down.
Reliably.
Yeah.
Yes, we rely on that.
Given the, as this trip would be, would commence on February 28th, I think we need to act upon it, and I seek a motion to approve this field trip with the caveat that Meredith has listed.
Right.
So I seek that motion.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion from Ms. Oliver, and a second from Mr. Kennison to approve the United Nations field trip to Philadelphia with the amendments that Meredith listed. All those in favor of approving it, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved, enjoy the trip and come back and tell us how it goes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Michaela.
Michaela. And the next thing will be the program of studies.
Thank you, if I may, if I could just steal about 30 seconds, just as a recognition, if it pleases the board on something that happened here last night with our Youth to Youth organization, for those who weren't watching, if I may.
Please do, please do.
But I'm really proud of the kids, and so, for those who were able to watch the town council meeting last night, it was pretty incredible to see our Youth to Youth organization has been working for over a year on the tobacco 21 campaign to, and this is not a political statement, I'm just proud of what the kids did, to increase the age to purchase tobacco in the town of Newmarket from 18 to 21, and that was something they were really serious about. And so I'd just like to, if you wouldn't mind, read the announcement that I read this morning, because we're proud. So the Reverend, Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "Democracy transformed from thin paper to thick action is the greatest form of government on earth." And you don't need to be 18 to vote, but, you need to be 18 to vote, but you don't need to be 18 to have a voice. For over a year, our Newmarket chapter of Youth to Youth have been working with community leaders to pass a town ordinance raising the legal age to purchase tobacco, tobacco products from 18 to 21 within the town of Newmarket. Last night, the town council passed this ordinance by a 5 to 2 vote, and that's no small feat. Of the students who worked on this, none of them are of legal voting age, but we are proud of the efforts, and I want to thank specifically Caitlin Temple, Grace Loney, Lydia Zungy, Chloe Reynolds, and a few others who worked tirelessly to get this ordinance passed. I'd also like to show my appreciation for advisors, Ms. Michelle Sylvia, Ms. Lindsay Malsbury, who've been excellent mentors all the way along. And I just want to thank our kids and recognize our kids for that, that work and that civic responsibility, it was, it was just a really proud moment, and I just wanted to share it.
Thanks for sharing it with us.
And they did a great job last night, and they were headed over to Concord today to talk to the legislature.
They were headed to Concord today, so.
Yep, and they were on NPR this afternoon.
Really?
Yep.
And that would have been an excused absence for a learning experience. So, I thank you all, I know you've had a chance to sort of look through the program of studies probably multiple times for, for some of you, so I anticipate you'll have questions. And other than formatting and some of the spell checks and things, I won't dive too deeply into that, but I think it perhaps makes the most sense to look at the maybe seven or eight most glaring sort of changes, additions, and subtractions, and I can sort of lead you through those. It seems as though the document itself might say page five, but when you scroll down on your Google form, it'll say page six on the left-hand side, so. The first thing I will sort of point out is on the bottom of the document that says page five, it's not, it talks about the high school graduation requirements. There's a few changes there, one of which is we changed the course freshman writing to foundation, fundamentals of writing. Again, it's, it's a name change more than anything. The other piece is we looked back, and a fourth-year math experience is required by the state every year. Those three credits of math are what are required for graduation, you need a fourth-year math experience, and when we get deeper into the program of studies, you'll see some of the newer offerings that will, that'll be offered to kids in terms of math electives to fulfill that credit. Additionally, under the social studies section, you'll see, I just want to highlight the line that says, "The additional half-credit can be satisfied by taking any other social studies elective." That, that typically refers to students around the New Hampshire Scholars Pathway, so it's just important to point that out.
That was, yeah, that was my question, is how do you get a half-credit?
And you don't need to be eighteen to vote, but, you need to be eighteen to vote, but you don't need to be eighteen to have a voice. For over a year, our Newmarket chapter of Youth to Youth have been working with community leaders to pass a town ordinance raising the legal age to purchase tobacco, tobacco products from eighteen to twenty-one within the town of Newmarket. Last night, the town council passed this ordinance by a five-to-two vote, and that's no small feat. Of the students who worked on this, none of them are of legal voting age. But we are proud of the efforts, and I wanna thank specifically Caitlin Temple, Grace Loney, Lydia Zungy, Chloe Reynolds, and a few others who worked tirelessly to get this ordinance passed. I'd also like to show my appreciation for advisors, Ms. Michelle Sylvia, Ms. Lindsay Malsbury, who've been excellent mentors all the way along. And I just wanna thank our kids and recognize our kids for that work and that civic responsibility, it was just a really proud moment, and I just wanted to share it.
Thanks for sharing it with us.
And they did a great job last night, and they were headed over to Concord today to talk to the legislature.
They were headed to Concord today, so.
Yep, and they were on NPR this afternoon.
Really?
Yep.
And that would've been an excused absence for a learning experience.
Excellent.
I thank you all, I know you've had a chance to sort of look through the Program of Studies probably multiple times for some of you, so I anticipate you'll have questions, and other than formatting and some of the spell checks and things, I won't dive too deeply into that, but I think it perhaps makes the most sense to look at the maybe seven or eight most glaring sort of changes, additions, and subtractions, and I can sort of lead you through those. It seems as though the document itself might say page five, but when you scroll down on your Google form, it'll say page six on the left-hand side, so. The first thing I will sort of point out is on the bottom of the document that says page five, sorry, it talks about the high school graduation requirements. There's a few changes there, one of which is we changed the course freshman writing to foundation, or fundamentals of writing. Again, it's, name change more than anything. The other piece is we looked back, and a fourth-year math experience is required by the state every year. Those three credits of math are what are required for graduation, you need a fourth-year math experience, and when we get deeper into the Program of Studies, you'll see some of the newer offerings that will, that'll be offered to kids in terms of math electives to fulfill that credit. Additionally, under the social studies section, you'll see, I just wanna highlight the line that says, "The additional half-credit can be satisfied by taking any other social studies elective." That typically refers to students around the New Hampshire Scholars Pathway, so it's just important to point that out.
That was, yeah, that was my question, is how do you get a half-credit when they're full-credit courses?
Half-credit could be a semester course, such as sociology, psychology, some of those. If we scroll down to page eight on the Program of Studies, just bring your attention to the grade eleven requirements. Will you see chemistry? And I'd like to highlight this, because the reasoning for the clarification is beneficial to kids and student outcomes. So if we looked at chemistry and we recommend that it's taken junior, senior year, there would be obvious exceptions, but we've sort of recognized that we got to a place, and we're one of the only high schools that requires chemistry as a graduation requirement, and we are quite proud of that. We also recognize that there's a math foundation that's necessary to be successful in chemistry, and to say you need to take it as a junior doesn't really work, because if you haven't satisfied your fundamentals of algebra and algebraic thinking up to Algebra II, it can be quite difficult. So, we're sort of looking at that, and just made, it's a small shift, but it's important to point out that it's a shift that's made with outcomes in mind, and so I just wanted to point to that.
Will that help with some of the SST requirements too, now that SST students can go to SST earlier, and with the biomed program they have, and the pre-engineering program, they may have some prerequisites, is that ever a prerequisite?
So, I will address some of the finite pieces of SST towards the end, but that's a question that I'll hit on if
Right, because this was, yeah, this was the first year they could go before they were juniors.
That's correct.
And maybe the last.
So, and that's one of the things you'll see at the bottom, it says, "It's open to tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade," but there's a caveat that the tenth-grade piece is if space is available.
Yeah.
There are still, we are still under the impression that pre-engineering will still be open to any student who has completed Algebra I, so that still could be open to grade-nine students, but again, as with anything, it's, it could be the space limiting, though we don't anticipate pre-engineering, that would be very affected by that. Skipping ahead to page twenty, I'll vary attention next to that, and again, that's twenty on the Program of Studies, twenty-one if you scroll down. Under business education, if you see Introduction to Finance, that's a new course, and then, obviously, you can read the description, but it really talks about those finite pieces, it's a half-credit class, it'll be a semester long, and a student could potentially look at those two opportunities in math to say, "Here's my fourth math experience." Above that, you'll see Accounting I, we looked at the competencies and standards for that course. Historically, that was an L-four weighted course, and though for the last three years, the next two years of our students will be the four, five, six, if you remember correctly, starting next, starting this year, our freshmen went with a different college prep and honors tracks for their classes, and we eliminated the leveling, and you'll see that now with nine and ten next year. It was important to point out for accounting that, once we looked at the rigor of that course, it would have qualified as an L-five course, where in the past, it was, it was an L-four course, so it would have some implications on weight and class rank down the road, but we did not change it in the middle of this year, so that would be one recommendation for next.
Introduction to Finance, wasn't that part of the senior seminar too, though, wasn't the, like, just talking about credit cards and checking accounts?
Those would've been some of the pieces that would've fallen out of that, yes.
That's a great class.
And that's another good point to bring up, so, starting this year, we sort of recognized that in probably four or five other opportunities, the competencies for senior seminar were being met in, through the career counseling piece, some of their work with the College of Career Search, as well as economics, so, senior seminar no longer has to be a standalone course, which, in the, where we are right now with our electives, one of the unintended consequences of a senior seminar course is a quarter credit. So what then happens in a quarter-credit course, you'd have to fill in three other quarters
Right.
with quarter-credit, or a half-credit course, one year and two quarter credits, so you would have, you know, office aides, PEAs, and things like that, which isn't as rigorous as we'd like to be, and we didn't wanna be in the business of inventing course sections to maneuver around a necessary course, but we figured out, looking through our competencies, that we were kind of replicating in a few different places, so.
Good, alright.
It was sort of an approach to tackle our conundrum of offering rich electives. Down to page twenty-six. Just that one new course to add, which is pretty exciting, and if anyone's had a chance to see or experience some of the classes that Ms. Castellan teaches, Thriving in the Future: Adult Roles and Responsibilities. This course introduces students to the concept necessary to navigate the transition from high school to living on their own, so this also would hit some of the pieces that used to stand alone in senior seminar. But typically, Ms. Castellan's classes are some of our most popular electives, she's a pretty phenomenal educator.
Well, this would be good for special ed, too.
I mean, it's
Special ed student that wanted to
It really could fulfill, I mean, all types of students. You know, I think back to sort of my own career as a student, but even getting ready to go away to college and learning some of those pieces on your own, how to manage those pieces would be incredibly helpful. Down to page thirty-four. You'll see three, three new courses, and they're surnamed The History of Mathematics, Use of a Graphic Calculator, Strategic Competence in Problem Solving Using Puddles and Other Algorithms. Those are quarter-credit classes, and so, when we're looking at some of those, and these were some of the more creative things that our math department really wanted to sort of put their heads together on, and with that requirement of a fourth exposure to math, they really wanted to do something that was really interest, of interest to not only kids, but also to the instructors, and we sort of, Meredith and I talk a lot about, when teachers are excited about the courses they teach, it comes out in their teaching, and kids are excited when they're there, so. It'll be interesting to see what we get for interest, but those potentially, what would happen is students would sign up for a combination of, you know, two per semester, or supplementing those with maybe Intro to Finance or some of the other courses we talked about earlier, so. They are interesting, they are different, and we haven't run them before, so the proof will be in the pudding.
You haven't run the, those courses?
Those three courses are absolutely brand-new, we, they didn't, they weren't in the past, and they're here now.
And if I were to take History of Mathematics, how many, I don't know the right way to phrase it, but how many classroom hours?
That particular one would be a quarter-long class, so ten weeks, every other day for ninety minutes.
One more time, so, every other day for ninety minutes for?
For ten weeks, eighty-five minutes, I'm sorry, excuse me, so that, with their block schedule.
So pretty, pretty significant.
Yes, yes.
Time, yeah.
And again, we would, you would, it'd be necessary in scheduling to couple that in another quarter with another quarter-long class, so you'd have really a semester's worth of classes that would change halfway through.
So you don't end up with point seven-five credits?
Correct, correct, which leads us to another discussion point for later. That twenty-eight point-two-five credits to graduate, that twenty-five is something that we're looking at, because it's really sort of been like, it's been interesting, to say the least, to sort of figure out how to attain that, especially without senior seminar, so. All very well-intended, but sort of walking back through some of the pieces, and it's important to revise and look at this as a living document, because kids change and years change, but we're starting to get really creative as we face issues that we hadn't seen five years ago, so. The next piece, I'll bring it down to page thirty-eight, and this, this is an interesting one, and again, Linda Albright is a very talented instructor. She teaches mainly biology, but also her anatomy and physiology classes, and so we sort of went through this piece, and at first glance, it appears as though you'd have to finish Anatomy and Physiology I to be eligible for Anatomy and Physiology II. In my discussions with Linda, she made it really clear that that was, that you did not have to take one to be requisite for two, but that they were two separate courses, she's felt over the years that being able to really get into depth with, so for instance, if you looked at A and P one, it's a, it talks more about biology tissues, system, skeletal systems and muscles, and for a student who might be on the biomed path, but might be, you know, OTPT or something like that, that might be the course they so choose. Whereas the A and P two is more about respiratory, digestive, and sort of internal types of systems, and so she felt like she could give more depth and rigor if she separated them that way. We did sort of spot-check around the area of schools, there aren't other schools who employ this model. I, we had some discussion, and I, and I believe, and I support Linda on this, that this would be worth a try, I trust her judgment, and I think this is ultimately what's gonna be best for kids, and I'm interested to see how it goes. Caveat to that is, you likely would not be able to, you wouldn't be able to run one and two in the same year, so you would take A and P one, and then the next year you'd have to take two, so it would likely have to loop, you wouldn't be able to run both simultaneously. That one's pretty interesting.
And because it doesn't, because it's not a prerequisite, so you could have, if you were running two the year that jun, that somebody was junior, they could start with two and then take one the next year?
Correct, correct. So, when we sat down to talk about that, I felt very comfortable with Linda's justification for that.
I think that's a good option for a small school.
As well as the teacher leader, Allison, who's obviously wonderful as well. I just wanna point out Foundations of Western Civilization is an important one at the bottom of page thirty-nine. One of, one of sort of the changes over time is there's a geography component that the state requires, and we used to have standalone classes, Geography and Western Civilization, and now, within Western Civilization, the geography competencies that the state requires are covered. That has been a challenge, but a good challenge, and again, Mr. Goddard, who primarily teaches that class, is doing a really nice job of trying to work with that. He's also creating a version, when we go to the honors and college prep models, that really delineates for kids what the skill sets necessary are for each one of those, so those would be slightly nuanced, and he's really excited about that. So that, that change there with this new class of sophomores coming up will be honors and college prep, where it used to be what we called an L-five. That's just worth mentioning. And then if you, I'll get to the last piece here at the bottom of pages forty-five and forty-six, which are the questions about CECO School Technology or SST, and as of twelve-five, SST updated their course descriptions, and in there is that question that we spoke about earlier, in which we talk about it being space-dependent. Pre-engineering is still available for ninth-through-twelfth grade students if they've completed Algebra I. All of their first-year programs are eleventh and twelfth, as well as tenth-grade students on a space-available basis, and program-specific prerequisites would apply, so for instance, if a tenth-grade student was interested in pre-med, they would've had to probably complete it, they would've had to have completed Biology for them to get into the biomed program. So we do have a number of ninth graders who are taking Biology in the last two years, that's a real departure from how things work traditionally. And I have to say, I'm pretty proud of it, because we have the right kids in the right places, and that's pretty interesting. On a pilot basis, we've sort of broke through some of the traditional, "You have to do this when you're this age, and you have to do this when you're this age," which really falls in line with what we talked about with competencies and where we're headed in the future.
I took Biology as a ninth grader, all of my class did.
Well, I was looking at another school's Program of Studies not too far away, and Biology is the ninth-grade science class that they recommend. Additionally, what's not in here, which we, it's a small change, but it didn't make this draft, and I apologize. We looked at Integrated Science, and I met with Mr. York, who, by the way, was instrumental in collating all of this information, and I can't take, I'm just presenting. Justin and the team leaders did a phenomenal amount of work, obviously, and part of the revision process, but really, the team really deserves a lot of credit for the work. But when we looked at our Integrated Science in ninth grade, the right thing to do, and what Justin did was, he sort of did some anecdotal fact-checking with admissions counselors, and when admissions counselors see something called Integrated Science, they ask a lot of questions as to, is that a sort of watered-down version of curriculum? So we have had some discussions, and I think the right move, or not I think, I believe the right move would be to change that name from Integrated to Physical Science. When we were going back and forth between Next Gen and our old standards, that's when we went from what it was previously called to Integrated, but I think just that sort of more rigorous appeal to admissions counselors to have a change to Physical Science from Integrated is something that you won't see here, that I, my recommendation would be that we make a change, so.
That makes sense, too, rather than Physical Sciences and then Biological Sciences.
And then Chemistry is eleventh, and then they've got options, so. As I said before, the other thing that is in the works, and if it comes to fruition, we did recognize that with some of our chemistry courses, and we may be a year out, Chemistry in the Community might be a class that for kids to get some chemistry exposure and some hands-on chemistry and obtain that credit, but also recognizing that the foundational math skills might be difficult, that's one of the struggles we see when we ask all students, which is a rigorous expectation, to complete Chemistry. We don't want them to just complete it, we want them to understand it.
And modify it so much that it really isn't Chemistry, but we're calling it Chemistry.
And so, Ms. Wheaton, who's a first-year teacher, again, phenomenal and very driven, has worked through some of these curricular pieces, and if we feel like it's got some legs for next year, I'll ask to come back and run it through, so.
Now, Chris, I know, when we move into the honors regular last year from the L-five, four, five, six thing, what's the process for helping the incoming, the current eighth-grade students rising ninth grade, to help them understand what this process is in terms of communicating with their parents and things of that nature?
That's a great question, and very timely. Kristin Eberl, our middle school counselor, is, as we speak, the last few days, in middle school classrooms, sort of talking about that career cluster and that course selection process, and if you're so inclined, you can join us on Valentine's evening for our course, that was the one date that didn't have any other conflicts, other than perhaps some candy hearts, that we'll be doing a course selection night to sort of follow up with the parents, so the role for us has always been to get the information to kids first, drum up that talk and conversation, and be able to answer parent questions on that night, so. February fourteenth, if anyone's lost track of what Valentine's Day is.
Now, what's, once that happens, what's the timeline with the kids having to register and do all that stuff?
That should happen pretty quickly, in fact, this, we, when I look back at last year, I think we're about a month ahead of where we were at this stage last time, and our goal is to have schedules in hand and ready to go when the kids leave in June, which would be
Much nicer.
an amazing accomplishment, and very different than the practices in the past, so, again, hats off to our counseling office. They have worked really diligently to make these changes, and I am very thankful.
How, excuse me, how without, how without that in June could you staff appropriately? In other words, if people just arrived in the fall and?
The sections, we build our sections, I mean, we've always sort of had it done for June, but there's always a lot of changes throughout the summer, and the first two weeks with that ad-drop window, but we feel like by moving it up, we might have our ad-drop questions answered before we leave. We have to build our courses based on what we have for personnel anyway, so that part is, I don't wanna say it's easy, but it's a little easier because it's sort of a finite number, and we build sections based on interest, and we try to look at, you know, a number that we feel like is sustainable and gives us other options.
Should they glue the two pieces together, though, I would think?
It's, our counseling, our two-person counseling office is pretty amazing.
Thank you. Chris, one of the things that I was thinking about, and since you guys were here last year, in terms of, people were, just some scuttlebutt that I heard in terms of the concern about the fourth math year, and I think one of the things that you addressed with us, and I think, you know, could, would be good for folks at my parents, is that there are additional ways, other than the traditional math classes, to achieve those credits. Because, yeah, I spoke with a parent who was concerned about their child being able to fulfill that requirement, and I think, obviously, we're moving towards focus, more student-focused education anyway, but I think this is a good first step in just making sure that we articulate that.
Well, and I appreciate that, the other piece is, we made a concerted effort to also make sure we weren't just offering options. We wanted to make sure the options were rigorous, we didn't wanna check a box and say, "We've got this other option." We wanted to make sure they matched with interest levels of kids, that, that fourth year can be really tough if everyone's attained the credits they need to graduate, and they feel like they have and they feel like they have to take a class even though they don't really need it. Because that fourth year doesn't all, at all, oftentimes doesn't impact somebody's ability to get their twenty-eight and quarter credits to graduate. So they may be scheduled into a class because the state says you need a fourth year, but they may not be necessarily in love with accounting or, you know, enter the name of the course here. So I, again, kudos to the math department for trying to be creative with that. And if you're not a math person.
Maybe you'll get interest. Maybe you'll get a kid that had no interest.
I want to sit in on that puzzle class.
I, I do too. And I said, hey, this is sort of a risk here, but I'm willing to get behind it. I want to see it.
I did four-year-old classes with puzzles, so I want to see how it works with big kids.
I've got a fifteen-year-old who's pretty quick with a Rubik's Cube and I can't solve one side of it, so it's always interesting.
So obviously Velax is always my bane of existence. How many Velax courses? What were the number again?
I think right at last count and not counting anyone who's credit getting, using them for credit recovery. I think we're at seventy-eight students who, right now, this quarter are enrolled in a Velax course. So those are seventy-eight elective courses.
Are there any that are taking, are you, do you have more than five kids taking one course?
I would have to look, I would have to pull it up.
I guess what's?
There are a few. I can tell you, I think it's, it's, it may be helpful to know the, sort of the procedure or the process for that. We typically don't allow students to take a Velax course that we offer in-house.
Absolutely.
If there's an extenuating circumstance in terms of scheduling and whatnot, that would be a conversation with the department head and myself and the school counselor. There are a number of courses such as AP Psychology where I think we do have four or five kids enrolled right now. And again, I, I think it's important to say online learning opportunities because Velax is one we hear a lot, but it's not the only one.
Right.
So I, yeah, I tried not to mention them by name, but there are a number. And we're there, I'm sure everyone's heard, we're sort of feeling it right now is one of those years where space and people are, are an issue. It's sort of the perfect storm, but we're, we're, we're working through it.
Well, I guess my question, if we started seeing kids taking, five or six kids taking the same course and it was pretty consistent, would we start looking into bringing that into our program of studies?
Absolutely. In fact, so we offer Calc AB. The next phase there would be Calc BC. If there was an overwhelming number of kids who were ready and wanted to take Calc BC, we would absolutely run a section of Calc BC. AP Psych, in the set, in the three years I've been principal, has been the one that's been closest to that. That would require us to have a teacher AP certified over time. That's AP's recommendation. Which isn't, it's not a monumental task, but it's, it, it's worth, it's worth noting. That's the one that in my time anecdotally has been the one that's highest.
Yeah, that's the one that seemed to have increased all the AP.
The other challenge though is that often the students who are taking those classes aren't going to have the same blocks free because of the other course demands that they have. And so you may not be able to align that to offer the class in-house and that's, that's part of our struggle. Some of those students are also at SST. Some of those students are doing other advanced courses that require additional block time, lab classes.
It's been in a lot of cases, a, a nice way to alleviate and continue learning at, at the same token. You know, I'm sort of a competitive human and I like to keep all our kids in-house with what I believe are the best instructors. And so we'll continue to look at it, but it's, it's, it can be a really viable solution. And it, but it doesn't fit for everybody. Not everyone has the profile to be a successful online learner.
Right.
Yeah, just along the, along that same line, in terms of Velax, I think, I mean, I think there's, there's good and, good and less good aspects to it. It just, you know, what it may help districts like us do is compete on a larger scale in terms of the availability of, of classes. We may not have the volume to offer. Of course, you know, that's what we're, we're doing now. We have a lot more kids taking it. And, you know, it is, it, it's for those who may want to take more advanced courses, but also those who want to take less advanced courses, but just have to fit it into a certain timeframe. Velax you can take all year. You can take it in the summer. VHS is, is another online program which follows a regular school calendar. So Velax is a little bit more, more flexible in that regard. But I was wondering, high level, and I don't know if we're there yet, we've considered, I think, this year around in the, in the, in the budgeting process about, you know, having a dedicated, you know, aide if you will, or a
Paraprofessional.
Paraprofessional. It, you know, if, if down the road, it may make sense to have subject matter sort of advisors, if you will, like somebody from the math department that might be able to advise internally kids who were taking, you know, Velax math courses, be it, you know, you know, algebra or all the way up to AP Calc and things like that. I, I don't know if we're there yet. Same thing for history or English or psych or, or anything like that. Maybe not a full-time dedicated para.
I think you're going to see that more with extended learning opportunities and other, Velax may fall into that, but I think you'll see it more with students pursuing projects of interest and passion, for lack of a better term, once they hit their junior and senior years, who've completed a lot of our in-house courses, who are really interested in pursuing something deeply, who need an advisor. Maybe they're, I'm thinking of an example of a student I worked with, maybe they're pursuing football statistics because they're interested in big data, they're working with algorithms, they've got really advanced math skills. They, it's an independent study type of project with a teacher. It's not going to fit into a regular classroom environment. They're going to be advised probably in small groups and you will over time, I think, based on trends that, that you can see around the country in education. You're going to see a need to have a block where a math teacher is available to support students and a history teacher and a literacy teacher.
You know, Velax, saying this, I've had, I guess, a little experience with it. The availability of teachers and, you know, this is based in Exeter, but it uses, I think, mostly New Hampshire educators to teach these courses. And maybe somebody from Pancorden or, you know, Portsmouth or whatever other school. They offer regular office hours. It's, I, I found it's pretty good accessibility that they're there. You know, you can usually find somebody, but it's always nice to have that face-to-face. And I suppose they could do it on an informal basis with, you know, teachers or whatever that they've developed a relationship with, that if they had a question, they could.
The hope would be through advisory, that would be another place you could do some of those pieces. One of the, and again, I, I think, I, I want to be sort of really careful just to talk about all distance learning opportunities rather than one single one. But it's, the one that you mentioned, Mike, in particular, is accredited. They require the teachers to be certified. They have their own counseling staff, their own administrative staff. One of the things that we have found some success with is the, the communication piece. Because one, because it's another institution on its own, there's no obligation to, for us to have communication back and forth. In fact, it can be quite difficult because it's very student and family directed. So, you know, if, for instance, Meredith's children wanted to take a class, they have to do the, the entrance call together. They have to sort of walk through those pieces. And I have a login, as does Mr. York, to kind of check progress. But I've learned a lot along the way. I could have a student show me, I could say, hey, show me your grades. And they could say, I've got a ninety-six. And then I realized you had to sort of really look far out, like, well, what's the expected date of completion? So for instance, our juniors and seniors.
A ninety-six with one of fifty-seven assignments.
With one of fifty-five assignments. So there, there was a little of that in the, in the early stages and so we got, we got wise to it. And I said, wait a minute, you've got to expand that page. You're not showing me the whole story. And, and I mean, it, it happened in the beginning and so we sort of, we got wise to it, like I said. But you find, so what we did was we framed it for kids. And, and it's tied to our junior and senior privileges now and with space issues, we've had to expand that a little bit. Just while we're sort of building and, and moving. But we found that if we make the caveat that it's got to be a certain percentage for mastery, and in our case it's eighty-five or higher, and that the expected date of completion needs to line up with the end of our quarter or May twentieth for seniors, which then puts you sort of on track to get them on our transcripts for graduation. That's different this year. And that was from Justin. I said, wait a minute, this kid said he had a ninety-seven and he's got one out of fifty-five assignments done, so it was learning for us too.
That gives them that ascent incentive to, to finish this and to be on task.
So, and that's really all in terms of the teeth because we're not, we don't oversee the instruction.
Right.
That's how we can help kids help themselves be accountable. So that was interesting.
The Course of Studies, Program of Studies. I seek a motion to approve the program of studies for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, Newmarket School year.
So move.
Oh wow. I have a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. McKenney to approve the program of studies. Any questions or anything else?
No, thank you. Tell everybody there, thank you for all the time and effort.
Thank you all very much.
And I'm always impressed by the breadth of courses that are available at, at our small school. Even before we get to any other learning opportunity, it's amazing to see all the different opportunities that children have to learn. And so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Let's move to the vote. All those in favor of approving these courses that we see?
Aye.
It's approved. Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Next we have Facilities Manager Director Greg Marles. Greg, you have seventy-two different things on the agenda tonight. As, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you could help us with the energy audit, the elementary, are you going to do this?
I'll, I'll talk about the energy audit. It's not an action item.
So Greg, you can do the sewer repair opportunity, the disposal of the asset, the snow blower, the sign and the weight room fitness equipment bid, if you would. Thank you.
Which one do you want to start with?
Let's take it from the elementary sewer repair.
So as you know, as we've gone through this project, we've had all kinds of investigations and looking at the sewer line that's existing in the school, at, at the elementary school. And we found that the line is, is damaged to a point that it needs to be replaced. So in looking at it, it's not part of the original scope of the project to do that. So we're, what we've approached this as is it's a project that the school funds through their regular general funds instead of through the construction, because it isn't a part of the construction or the bond that was put in place for this work. The Ekman Construction, working with our engineers, our architects, came up with a plan where we don't have to actually remove a section of that line that's bad because we're just going to abandon it in place. It's seven feet down. So fortunately this runs right straight down the hallway of the east wing, which makes it a, an interesting line replacement. So we're actually going to run a line out the back of the building tied to our new sewer system that was put in. This actually, believe it or not, cut about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the cost to make these repairs by going at it at this aspect. We'll be digging a hole at one end, capping the line permanently, basically digging a hole at the other end and running a line out the back of the building. That particular cost is ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six from Ekman. Since they're on site and our contractor's on site, it would make sense to have them do it since they're already running lines in, in the facility.
And so our recommendation to you is that we approve that repair and fund it from the current year operating budget. We anticipated that we were going to do the quarterly financial report first. We didn't. But Lisa can attest that we feel confident that those funds will be available to us in this fiscal year.
So the whole ninety-nine would come out of the operating budget?
Come out of the budget.
So if I may, just a couple of, um, first of all, the, the resolution in, in the price seemed, you know, Ekman's solution of this seemed fine on its face. I don't, I don't see, see any, any issues there. I think they've thought it through and talked to the right folks. The, the, the one thing I, I kind of struggle with conceptually is, is, is the funding source part of it. And, and I, and, you know, there's no, I guess, black and white answer to the thing, so I, I acknowledge that either. But I just, this is something that we've sort of been considering all along, is coming out of the bond. You know, we've sort of had it as a placeholder in our, in our, in our, in our financials. And most likely this would have been on the bond as part, under the, under the original GMP if, if, if we had done the investigation timely. So my, my, my one concern is that, and I, you know, again, it's, it's not a black and white issue, is that this is something we likely would have put into the bond, into the part of the construction budget if we, if we had done the work timely. And I'm concerned that by taking it out of operating budget, we're kind of skirting that a little bit. And I don't know if that's the right thing to do. But I understand where we're at too with our, our level of funding. So I, I, I do appreciate the concern in looking at that aspect of it too, in terms of the status of our reserve. So I get that and I totally appreciate that, but I just, I'm not so sure. And you know, if you look at Ekman's estimate, they're talking about a change to the original contract for this amount. Again, suggesting it's part of, of the, of the construction budget and, so, I mean, those are my thoughts. I don't know if others have thoughts on that.
Meredith, do you have something you want to say?
So I would just add, I, I understand that perspective. I would also say if we weren't under construction and that repair came along, we would have to make that out of our operating budget funds. And because we feel that we have that money available, to me, that is the logical place to take them from. You still have a lot of work yet to do on your projects. You're a year out from completion of those, a year and two months. My, my gut would say, hold on to your reserves and use the funding that you have available to you. But that's obviously the board's decision.
I, I have the same feeling that both Meredith and Mike have. I, I could go either way on it. I think the important thing is that we understand that if we do take it out of operating budget, we're not going to create a, a funding problem down the road because we use that money. So we won't be able to do some planned activity. So I, I've, I've debated it too. I'd be inclined to take it out of operating budget, but I think we need to be very open with the people that this is a, this is not a slam dunk. We're making a judgment. We're doing the best we can. But the, but the project is going so well in terms of budget and time. We've got the reserves and, not the reserves, I'm using the wrong term. We've got money in the operating budget to cover this, so I, I would support it.
My thinking is if we take it out of the construction and don't use the operating budget now, we'll have to use the operating budget possibly later when something comes up in the construction that we hadn't anticipated. So we're going to tackle that operating budget at one point or another. And this is a known amount out of the operating budget.
Well, if a problem comes up later on, we're going to reduce the project. We're not going to take it out of the operating budget. We're bound to.
Yeah, I, I just want to, I, I totally appreciate that thought that's gone into this. So it's not, and, and again, it's not a black and white answer. So I just, it, it is something that's worthy of discussion though and.
My, I, I, I'm actually going to agree with everything Al said. I like the way you said that. I, my concern is people are going to say, we have an extra hundred thousand dollars lying around, like in.
But we typically do.
I know.
We typically do have a, you know, as, as part of good budgeting.
Yeah.
We, we do. It's just, again, this is not a hill I'm, I'm.
Right, neither.
But you know, so it's just, but it's something worthy of.
But like you said, we need to be honest with it. I mean, Lisa can talk about it. We can talk where the money's coming from. Here it is. And this is what we're going to do to keep it from going into, into our construction.
And I, I'm afraid to spend money today without knowing what's going to come beyond this ninety-nine thousand down the bath. So I, I am inclined to, to use the operating budget for this.
I am too.
And people can disagree with our decision, but at least it's, we've had, as Mike said, we've had.
Just got a discussion about it.
Well, and also your facilities has gone over this as well, correct?
Well, they, they don't weigh in on the funding issue of where it comes from. They, they do understand what the solution is and the cost.
And just a thanks to you Greg and, and your work on coming up. I know Ekman was involved and everybody else was too, but coming up with a much less expensive solution than we first, than we first thought we were going to run into.
Yeah, I think it's a lot better than the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes. I seek a motion to approve the expense from the operating budget of the ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars to repair the elementary sewer, the, toward the Newmarket Elementary School.
So move.
Just, just, you have a period of comment here. Just want to make sure though that, you know, I'm looking at this, that, you know, this is the full price, that there's no additional fees taken by the professionals from this. In other words, it's not part of the, the construction contract, so that this wouldn't affect their fees.
It's not part of the bond. It is part of their construction as a change because we're asking them to do that project.
If we asked them to do that work, they would get a fee as a part of that.
In addition to this?
Correct, but it would be a separate invoice. Correct, but it would be a separate invoice. It wouldn't be invoiced to the bond. It would be a separate invoice for that scope of work.
Okay, do we know what that is?
It's 2.5 percent.
Just for Ekman?
That's what Ekman's fee is, that we have signed a contract with for any of these type of situations.
Okay, and then nothing, Benwell doesn't get a fee?
No, not on this particular one. Other than engineering and design work, which has not, they have not invoiced us for it all at this point. So, but we have, in another area, we have added engineering, which is in the bond for additional engineering work, but that is not included in that number, if there is a cost for their engineering. They have not invoiced us on it.
And where will that come from?
We'll have to address that when it comes forward.
No, no, I mean, will it come out of the operating budget, or will it come out of the...
I think that would be a decision that you would have to make, whether or not it comes out of the bond or the operating. We have funds for additional engineering in the bond already as necessary, so there is funding still remaining in those areas.
So it's ninety-nine plus. So it's ninety-nine, three hundred and twenty-six plus?
Plus the 2.5.
Yeah.
Plus engineering.
Plus engineering.
So I don't know if we got an approval of the motion, but I seek a motion to approve the expenditure for the elementary sewer repair.
You had a motion, not a second.
Yeah, who?
Al made the motion, but you didn't have a second.
I need a second. Excuse me.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. Oliverberg. Any other discussion about this?
Yeah, I, just so we don't have to beat this drum again, I think engineering costs, we should treat this all in the same category. So if you have to pay $5,000 or whatever, let's make sure we're consistent, because that's going to look a little odd.
I don't disagree. It's ultimately your decision as a school board to decide where those funds come from.
Any other discussion? We'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving this expenditure, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nay.
For, approved, one nay.
Who do you want to go to next?
E.
Yes.
Snow blower.
Yes, the snow blower.
So part of our policy is that any asset that the school has, we must gain permission to remove that from our asset list. And in this particular case, I have a 1992 snow blower that is an asset of the school department. As you well imagine, a 1992 is a fresh operating machine right now. It needs about $300 to $500 worth of work to actually make it a well-running machine. And since we buy brand-new ones for $800, it didn't quite make sense to put that kind of money in something that's already 25 years old. So what we're asking for is to allow us to sell this snow blower. The actual plan is to do a sealed bid, put it out to everybody and their brother, and whoever comes up with the highest amount of money offer on it would end up with the snow blower.
I'll make the motion, but I'd also see if we can investigate putting a limit on it, so we don't have to, the board doesn't have to deal with selling the lawn.
It's in your policies.
Yeah, but if, can we...
A recommendation is in your policies for $500.
Oh, gotcha. We're looking at financial policies tonight.
Gotcha, gotcha. I hope the limit's like a grand or something.
It's 500, but we'll look at it.
Okay.
Soon.
We have a motion from Mr. Zink to approve this sale. I need a second for that motion.
Second?
We have a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Mr. Kinnison to dispose of the asset, the snow blower. Any other discussion on that? Moving to the vote, all those in favor of making the sale, say aye.
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 Thank you.
The next thing, Greg, would be the sign.
So yeah, I think at our last meeting, we were asked to bring back some additional information on the sign that was...
And I believe you have the information on what the sign looks, what the proposed sign is. Essentially, my request on this particular item is that in the town of New Market, we have a zoning article that says that no message boards, electronic or manual, are permitted in any zone.
School district is examined.
The school district, as part of State Title X, Section 235, says we are, that we can't put anything in a blind spot, so we have that thing up. But the town and school is exempted from its own ordinances. So for instance, if Lamprey Health, which is next to us at the high school, wanted to put the same type of sign in, they can't. So I felt it's important that the school board make the decision on whether or not we can put a message board out there, which again, is allowable on the fact that you are not, you're exempted from your own ordinances.
And we did accept a donation for this too.
Correct.
For the sign.
Correct.
Yes, to have an electronic sign similar to that at Co-Brown.
Yes.
Right.
The way you approved it.
We did remove a non-electronic sign from there. And I've also talked to the town administrator. He says it's ultimately, it is not required for us to follow those ordinances, but it's not a decision he was willing to weigh in on.
My question would be, with our changed traffic pattern because the bus is going in there and the crosswalk, can we make sure that that's placed someplace so that people are not going to miss that people are approaching the crosswalk? Because that would be a real blind spot if somebody were running out of the school behind that sign. No matter which side of the sidewalk you put it on, one direction or the other is going to have a blind spot for kids.
The proposal is to put it in that grass median. We already have power that's already run out.
I understand that it's in the grass median. I drive that because I come from...
From a visibility standpoint, a setback.
It is a good-sized sign, and...
That was my concern when this came up a couple of weeks ago, is have we kind of thought about that distraction aspect of this?
The sign is just about two inches shorter than, well, excuse me, five foot, seven inches, and I'm 6'1", so it's going to be...
My height. If you add a couple inches.
So that is the height of the posed sign. The discussion has been that we would locate the sign not where the electrical currently is, but put it on the opposite side of the crosswalk. We would have to run new electrical and conduits and everything to that location, because we have no power over there.
On the parking lot side?
No, no, out in front of the school, still in the grass median, but on the east side of the grass median, not the west side.
Okay.
Towards Lamprey?
What's that?
Towards Lamprey.
Towards Lamprey. There will be an expense for electrical, because we do not have any electrical in there. So we'll have to cut some pavement out and things like that.
Yeah, it's the same problem. Yeah. No matter which side of the street you put it on, or which side of the sidewalk you put it on, you're going to have somebody driving who's not going to see students on the other side.
But if you're putting it on the east side, you're going to be, you're going to see the crosswalk before the sign, the signs after that. And again, we will be coming...
For the lane you're traveling in, right, in closest proximity to the sign, you're going to see the crosswalk first, then the sign. It's the traffic coming from the opposite direction has a longer approach. It wouldn't block the view of the crosswalk.
Right, okay.
We will also be, depending on how you decide this will be, you also bring in another request to put in the electrical and cut, we have to cut some of the sidewalk out and some of the curving to get the electrical from where it is to this location.
Presuming it was, the electrical was routed there all ready, what about the other side of the road and that grass spot?
You mean, right now, where the staging areas?
Yeah.
We could, well, the paving hasn't, the permanent paving hasn't been done for the walkways there. We could bring in the power from the art building there. We'd have to look at how, you know, how we place it.
That it's not right in the middle of the crosswalk.
Yeah.
And it makes it part of the school, that parking lot?
Yeah.
Because how many people have...
Right.
I don't know what the parameters were that was as part of the donation, so I don't know if there was a specification of where it had to be placed.
No, no.
I should hope. I love the sign. I don't want to...
It's amazing.
Oh, it's a great-looking sign.
Looks great.
My biggest thing was is to make sure that you know that we're exempted from the ordinances, but you need to know.
But the reason that we're back and we didn't vote last time was really because the board wanted more detail about the sign, the parameters, and its placement.
And I know there was a question about the LED on it. It is designed to dim automatically based on the light levels outside, which is a requirement for the sign. We won't be able to obtain a permit for this, but again, that's not an issue.
Sorry, Greg. You know, the other thing I'm thinking of too is in terms of the opposite side of the road. I think we're, you know, we're less likely to wind up with snow piles in front of it, because it's just a sidewalk there, and most likely that side's going to be plowed clear, you know? And on this side, you might, in a big snow year, you might get snow piled from the bus loop. You know, you can't imagine it in this picture, because it's nice and, you know, it's in the middle of the summer, but it's that. And the other thing, I'm assuming this is remote control, and somebody can sit in the office and change the...
Is, I've got to look, it is a remote-controlled device. I've got to look to see where distances that it can work, but I don't think that's an issue. I think you can even walk up to it, work with the device.
I see.
It's probably on a wireless. I do know that.
So I guess, what sort of approval are you looking for from us for tonight?
I'm looking for approval, I guess in this case, where to put it and that we would be installing something that is outside of our, the ordinances, the town, and whether or not you feel comfortable saying to that, yes, go ahead and put it in, even though no other businesses in the community can do this.
So I'd recommend that it, since it sounds like you have the information from Greg, at least with respect to size of sign, that it sounds like we need some additional information about potential cost to place it on the other side of the road. Perhaps a drawing that would depict what that might look like, potentially showing both drawings, and then the board can approve that at a future meeting. I think that the push on this was coming from the junior senior high wanting to get that sign in place sooner rather than later. But we could get another meeting, we'll...
My original memo was to, basically to have people realize that we can do this. It's, we have, we do have a town ordinance that says nobody else can, basically, so I...
DOT doesn't have to weigh in on this one.
I have not brought this up to the DOT, but there is...
Oh, but the last time we didn't bring it up to DOT, we had to go back.
I, so I can't, I have not brought it up, because they kind of didn't want to...
We don't want to take this down because you didn't ask.
But it is on Route 152, so, but it's off of their air...
But there are businesses all along.
Co-Brown's on Route 4. So I mean, I, yeah.
I think Meredith's point is well-taken. I think at this point, now that we've had the consensus seemed to be to contemplate placing it on the other side of the street, I think we have all sort of agreed without even taking a vote, and I expect to speak in a turn, so tell me if I am, that we would like to proceed with having the sign placed and utilized in the donation as it was given. So I think Meredith's point is well-taken, and we'll have you come at a future meeting, Greg, with sort of a visual to what it would look like on the other side of the street. That eliminates the potential for the crosswalk conflict, and we take it from there.
Fantastic.
Is that fine with everyone?
Yep, it makes sense.
Okay. Greg, and the last thing is the weight room fitness.
Yes.
Equipment.
Okay, so again, this is also based on the same donor. We did put out a competitive bid for fitness equipment. We actually sent it out to quite a few companies, actually, in the given area as well as outside the given area. Tried to concentrate on what we could find locally in New England-based. Unfortunately, none of the companies actually supplied us bids. I think I had over 12 direct sending, plus we put it in the construction notifications and to try to get as many people as possible. We did receive two prices from our solicitation. Matrix Fitness, which came in at $20,162, and Gronk Fitness, that came in at $12,986, for the equipment as listed from the original request. So I'm seeking to get approval to authorize the superintendent to move forward with Gronk Fitness of Williamsville, New York, in the amount of $12,986.65.
I seek a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement with Gronk Fitness of Williamsville, New York, in the amount of $12,986.65, utilizing funds from a donation accepted by the school board for the purchase of these items.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Kinnison and a second from Ms. McKenney to authorize this. Any discussion? Hearing done. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor of authorizing this agreement, say aye.
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 Thank you, Greg.
Greg, thank you.
All right.
I've got some old stuff I've had to do in one shot.
Thank you very much. All right, we will go to the report section of our agenda. Meredith, do you would like to start with your superintendent report? We will start with you.
Okay. So our new boilers are online at the junior senior high. Hopefully, that will reduce future challenges for us, though I will note that we are still, because we're still building out our system, we don't have a full controls system available to us yet, and we're still working with antiquated equipment in most of our classrooms, everywhere except the new additions. So the boilers are great, but we still have some challenges with the internal infrastructure.
Can I ask you a question? Just because I was at, Greg, don't leave yet. I was at Poetry Out Loud last night. The plumbing that's in the, it looks like heating plumbing, there's some copper and iron in the right. If you're looking at the stage stuff on the right, is that temporary? Is that going to be there?
That won't be...
That is not temporary, but it will be enclosed when this project's done.
Sorry.
That stage has to come out, come forward quite a bit.
Okay.
So that actually gets built into the walls.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yes, and we had our elementary gym opening, I think, since our last meeting, which is a great new resource for the community, but especially a great resource for Nancy Miller and PE classes, which are a whole different world now.
It was amazing to see the entire student body and staff in the room, surrounding the gym with a totally empty floor. It was a surreal moment, and just seeing the kids' faces that day was, it makes all these meetings and all this stuff so worthwhile. So thank you to everyone, Mike and Al, and everyone on the team who has made this process possible so far. Sorry, Meredith.
Oh. We've mentioned Poetry Out Loud. We also had our elementary band concert the same evening. This Friday night is Mule's Madness. The following Friday night is a junior high semi-formal dance. Yesterday was an early release day for us, which is a day for our teachers to work on curriculum and competencies. Our special education pair professionals were also receiving training in some new Medicaid software that we're using. We've, Jason, Carrie, and I have attended a couple of different workshops around the new legislation and the requirements for the data security plan that has to be in place before the end of June, so we're making some headway on that front. We posted today our RFP for E-Rate, which is reimbursement that comes to the district, federal reimbursement for technology-related purchases that fit a very narrow list of specifications. I have several donations I want to point out. One I'm going to read to you that just came, "But dear members of the New Market School Board, please accept this check for $387.80 from our Box Tops collection to go into the Playground Repair Fund that we started a couple of years ago. We have opened the store again this year, and we'll be bringing you more money from the store and collecting more Box Tops in June. Sincerely, the Children of Link Together Service Learning," and it's signed by Paige Juliana, Nate Collin Maeve, Sophia, Amara Stella L., Simon Annabelle Kenzie, sorry, maybe Joyce, Amelia, Brooklyn, Grace, Dani, and Kerrigan.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Link Together, for that donation and the kids.
We've also received a donation from parents of a student in Penny Elwards' class for $100. So we want to thank Ms. Kyn and Mr. Toon for that. We received several donations from Lowe's of Greenland, and they include switch drivers, multi-purpose saws, spray paint, and interior paint. So we appreciate all of that. The total value is roughly $433. So those are benefiting our arts and theater programs, robotics, and technology education, as well as I think the maintenance department also received a tool out of that. So thank you to them. And then finally, a donation to the robotics account from New Market Mills Residential. Residential Master Subtenant LLC. So we thank them as well.
Thank you for all those donations.
And I think that's it.
Perfect. Moving to school board committee reports. Anyone have anything to update since we've last met?
Just a couple things, and I'm going to be forwarding things to Meredith, or Meredith has them, I'm sure, to forward to. At the SST meeting last, last week, we looked at the 20-year agreement that's signed between the receiving district, which is the extra district where the SST building actually sits, and the sending districts. And it has to be reviewed and updated once every 20 years. So as the, the total body recognized, none of us will be there the next time it's reviewed. And none of us were there the last time it was reviewed. So that is up for review, and we'll be looking at one component of it, which is the funding for special ed students. The superintendents, as a group, asked that Margaret provide five years' worth of data to look at how it was funded and how it would be funded under a new formulation, so that they could see if it balances out over the long term. So I think maybe that information is coming out now. I couldn't log in, I had a Dell today.
Okay.
So anyway, to give you a chance to look at that, because that's going to be the factor probably that is of most concern. If it was of concern to the superintendents, it's going to be of concern to the, the school boards. And in fact, the discussion about the scheduling, the meeting around, was around how many of the school board members were up for reelection in this election cycle, and whether or not they would be present at the next meeting, and the knowledgeable ones, because they've been there for the discussion. So that's the SST part of it. The Policy Review Committee, we look, we're looking at those policies tonight, just so you know. A lot of them we're updating to bring in line with either the RSAs or with the New Hampshire School Board Association versions of it. One on loss damage, Loss Management Committee, we recommended that the committee review that. Other than that, it was some editorial changes, such as the gender bias norms that were referencing nurses and principals and superintendents and cultures and things like that. Just edit out those gender biased pronouns that were a part of a lot of the documents, because they, they back ways.
May I just add one more thing about SST? Margaret Callahan, the principal, is leaving SST this year. She'll be at our next meeting to talk about their programs and is bringing some students with her. But next week is also the opportunity for the board, the SST board, to meet the principal finalists.
Oh, yes.
So that is scheduled for next week.
Any other school board committee reports? Thank you, Meredith, for your recording. Hearing done, we'll move to the next thing. I did not see the calendar in our, but I do know we have the February 14th Raising, Rising 8th, 9th Grade Student Parent Night at the Junior Senior High. What time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. What else is on the, on the schedule, Meredith?
Building Committee, February 19th at 7:00. School Board Workshop, February 21st at 7:00. They're big school events, school vacation, but that will be after our next meeting.
Perfect, thank you. I just want to give a brief update on the superintendent search. We've been getting people volunteering fast and furious, especially in the parent and the grandparent realm. The deadline for submitting na, your name, is February 15th, and I will bring a proposed list for the team to the workshop on the 21st for our approval at that point, and then.
Proposed list, or are we going to decide ourselves?
Um, I don't know if it will make sense to go through all the names, because there are quite a few of them.
And who would be making that decision then?
It would either be, and I, we can, you guys can tell me how you want to do it. We can do a random draw scenario. We can do a, you guys tell me how you want to do it. The, the issue is going to become parents and grandparents.
We've always done it as a board. It's always been a board decision, a board discussion.
Okay. Well, then I guess that's what we'll do.
Yeah, take it to board, we do it that way.
I mean, the folks in, in Art reminded us that this could be part of the, the part, one of the hardest parts of the whole process, which is picking, because especially if you get, you know, more than.
I mean, I, I definitely don't want that responsibility, so I'll do whatever the group wants to do.
Is, are they submitting any, like qualifications or backgrounds?
Some. I'll, I'll send you guys, I'll forward all the emails that I have, and we can take it from there.
Okay.
You know, I, I think it just gets dicey, potentially. I don't know if, I don't know if a blind way to do it is the best way.
My other concern, if we put them on an email, then it becomes.
That is how they submitted it.
Right, but if you send it to us as a board, right, so we have just copies of them here, how does that work? As far as just privacy and, I don't know.
So you're asking to have a non-public session to put the committee together?
Then that's what we'll do.
That's what I was wondering.
But I mean, I think it would, it would, there would have to be some sort of communication in some form prior to that, so that, because it's not going to be, I don't think it would be sufficient to just have a list of 20 names and discuss it in a non-public session. I think there would need to be communications sent, so that Mike, to Mike's point, he could say, oh, Kimberly Shelton has XYZ experience when we come to talk about it.
I think, I think I sense what your, your concern is, and it, you know, I kind of thought about it too, Kim, was that, you know, how do you do it? In fairness, if you have more than, you know, in doing it randomly, by, you know, you know, just by picking, doesn't seem the right thing to do, but, you know.
It gets dicey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But based, you know, having a, you know, maybe picking it based on someone on qualification or background, or, I don't know.
I mean, I think that, I think the goal, my goal would be to get the best comprised group that can give us the best data in terms of skills that people have outside and things of that nature. So I think if, if we all commit to that being the primary goal, I think that the proper group will, will come to the fore.
Does that relate to, to student, teacher representatives as well?
If they're multiple, I would think it would. If we're going to use that criteria for, for other people, I would think that we need to use it for them. I think it needs to be a unified criteria.
So how do we deal with protecting all those applicants or interested persons' privacy in our need to have time to think about the information?
I mean, I would say if it's, if it's, if it's a non-public session, it would be under the confidentiality rules that we have for all items that come before us, unless I'm speaking out of place.
Okay.
Falls under protecting the reputation of people other than, person other than a member of the board.
Yeah.
Can we pick up those paper copies in advance? Do we have to wait till the non-public session? I guess that's the next question.
I guess it depends on when it's put together and how it's put together and how you intend to do that.
I would think that nothing would happen until after the 15th. And so it would be a matter of, of once everyone is done, so it's all in one lump sum. If the decision is, I meet, I, I communicate with Leslie and say, compile all of this by category and have a packet for everyone, I think that could work. But, you know, I, I think, Ingrid, the, the point that I want to reiterate is that all the stuff that we, a lot of the stuff that we deal with is confidential, and I think that this is no different.
Okay, okay.
And I think if, if we go with that paradigm and that thought process, it should govern the way that we do everything.
I agree. That, that makes sense.
So, so I will, so let, so can we agree that after the 15th, I will let you all know, you can kind of pick up your stuff. I will coordinate with Leslie when that is? Is that amenable to everyone?
Hmm?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thing, I think, without digging an issue that may not exist, I think we need to make sure that current law and right to know for applicants, that we understand that, because the law has changed since the last time we did.
And Al, one of the things that you do not know is that, that we have already addressed that for that specific reason.
These people as well?
Yes, for this specific search process. When we met with Carolyn and Art during the, the initial process, they made that request of us. That information was received and has been shared with them. That in terms of rules for the selection committee, in terms of non-public meetings and things of that nature, so that we leave ourselves.
So we, so I, I guess my, my question is, our legal counsel said to us that this information that we're gathering is subject to or is not subject to right to know?
Well, the question that they asked us was whether, there was a, a challenge potentially last time in terms of the ability to conduct search committee, overall search committee meetings, outside of the board search, but the, the community-wide, larger search committee in non-public sessions. That was the question that they asked us, because that became, has become an issue in other jurisdictions.
Right.
So the answer to that is, as long as they are properly posted and all those things, yes, that can occur. Our meeting cannot occur that way, because we do not have that opportunity. Now, Al, I think what you're asking is, when we get to the point, and I, and tell me if I'm wrong, when we get to the point of cand, final candidates, is that when you're talking about per?
No, he's talking about the committee.
The committee.
Then we're good.
I'm talking, no, I'm also.
The committee of, of, of citizenry and.
Right.
Right.
I don't think counsel weighed in on that.
Yes, they did.
They did.
And they said it is, is or is not.
That's exactly what I asked them.
It is or it is not subject to right to know, to know who the applicants were for that.
Committee.
Committee.
The ones that we're gonna.
That I do not know.
We need, yeah, I think we need to, we need to find that out.
Yeah, that's.
Al, I think the list of interested parties, again, would most likely be public information. The decision in terms of their individual criteria and background most likely would not, but.
If that's the case, that's, that's fine.
Will you, will you send me an email of what precisely you're asking, so I can make sure that I get a sufficient answer from legal counsel?
Sure.
That would help me.
Sure, yeah.
But Mike, thank you for clarifying it.
Thanks, Al.
All right. Moving along. Lisa, you were probably ready two hours ago, and I didn't call on you to do your quarterly financial report.
It's a work in progress in some regards, because second quarter is back in December, and things have changed a bit since I put this together. It should have been in your packet, I thought, so.
On Friday?
It was emailed separate with the audit, so I did not bring copies right now.
I wouldn't see if I have.
I guess.
I'm looking.
Did you all get?
Whoops.
Is it in the packet?
Is it this?
Yes.
Nope.
Nope.
It looks like this, so.
Looks like this, Al.
Down on the other side, Mike's.
It's a, it's probably, it's right after, it's right after the accountant's report, the audit report.
Well, I, I can speak to it and then make sure you.
Well, it's, I got my damn all over.
All right, okay.
Take mine.
Do you have two? I'll go make some copies.
That was a, Mike.
And I wrote on mine. Didn't keep, oh, no, I don't have a second one. This is the other one?
Yep.
This is half the same thing? This is, this is.
Oh.
Yeah.
If I, we could do another item, and Lisa could go make.
Excuse me.
Clean copy.
Yes.
Yeah.
How about that?
Sounds good.
I'll just run it off, and I'll be right back.
Lisa, I don't need one.
Sorry about that.
Um, we can talk while, while Lisa's doing that. In terms of, one of the things that came up prior to the deliberative session last week was the ways for us to communicate the information regarding the upcoming vote, in terms of the default budget situation and the teacher's contact situation, and what that means for taxpayers in terms of getting the facts out. And I was just wondering if anyone has given any thought to, you know, we had talked earlier about sort of modifying and tweaking a little bit the documents that Meredith had provided and the ones that she, she spoke to at the deliberative in terms of consequences, I don't want to use that word, but challenges that could arise should the default budget be what we're working with. You know, it's, it's, it's a thin line because we need to be giving facts out, as always, and not editorializing or being political in that way. But I think that it's important that people understand, as we've said before, what the potential pitfalls would be should that happen. So my question is, and I, you know, if anyone's given any thought to that documentation, if we want to take another look at the stuff that, Mike, I think you gave some feedback on a while back, to get that tightened up so that we can shoot it out through the usual channels in the near term to prepare for the March 12th vote. Is there anything, you know, I, I think my thought would be to sort of look at that document and flesh it out in a way that we feel, collectively feel it's appropriate, and then disseminate it accordingly.
It was interesting to be at the, at the deliberative and, and watching people who are uninitiated to the change showed up here for the first time. Just looking at faces, I could tell that they didn't really get it until Mickey stood up and said it for a second or third time. And that's, that's just the way things happen, you know? So I, I'm thinking if, I thought the, I think the materials we presented are excellent, you know? And I mean, it explains it out if you, if you read it and understand it. I just, I'm concerned that, you know, you know, we can put those up on the website, they probably already are, as part of the agendas and all that, and people would have to drill for them. But my, my practical concern is even if you put those in front of people, if you print it off a copy and put it in every door in the, in the town, that it's still.
Right.
It's, it's going to be lost on more, more than not, you know? So how, how do we, how do we practically, you know, sort of get, get folks up to speed like, like happened at that meeting, you know? Because I can guarantee you, most people are going to show up and not know what it is. And, and the concern we all recognize is that a lot of people may bite at the lower number.
Right.
Because that's, that's been past practice.
Yeah, and so why we do, you know? I mean, we, we can, I think one thing we can do is, you know, talk to our networks of folks and, you know, and spread the word that way.
And I think, I think the, the point that it's well taken is that it was not until, because it had been stated several times on Saturday morning what was going on. And I think it was not until Mickey made his announcement, you know, in a way that, and I told him, I told him, it's, it's a delicate balance for us to, to say those things, so I appreciated his comment that day, because he, he did drill it down. And I think, I think, Mike, it's sort of, you know, like the, the building stuff from before, it's throw the stuff out there in a variety of things, and then have the conversations and, and do things that way. The targeted, you know, conversations that we've had before, that I think we've talked about making in this, making sure that, that key entities or groups understand what this, what, what this situation is, why it's happened, that this is beyond our control. It's not our decision, it's not the budget committee's decision. If, this is from Concord, and these, this is what can happen potentially if this happens. So I think that the first step is sort of tightening up the documents, getting, making sure that we all fully understand them and can articulate them, because I think that's important too. And that we have a combined unified elevator situation to say, because I think that's important too, that we have that thing, and then disseminate it appropriately.
Let's meet at 6:00 on the 21st and route that out, so we can get that out, because.
Yeah.
I do think, particularly for a non-digital age bracket, that a paper document is very helpful. I know last, when we were doing the building warrant, being able to grab that piece of paper and say, it was in your mailbox, this is what it looks like, this is what it means, and talk people through it and say this point, and this point, and this point, helped me several times.
Yeah, I don't know if I have time for all that.
I, I mean.
Or funds. But I, I, but I think, I think it's something we can discuss, because I think that, you know, that's another point well taken. There are people that do not utilize computers in a way that's going to give us this information, that are in some ways more likely than others to potentially vote.
And that's why we need to go to the senior center, you need to go to the Falls Senior Housing, like those are the things that we did, we've done over the years. I, I now work, so I can't head any of that stuff up anymore.
I mean, I think, I think that becomes a question, you know, who is going to, to, to lead that? If that is, if that, if those initiatives aren't planned, they, they need to be planned and executed in a way that makes sense. It may not be I execute it and go to every event, but there needs to be a point person to organize those.
Right.
So my question becomes, who is that, and what does that look like? And I, you know, I, I think we, we need to think about that, because, you know, we do have quite a few balls in the air right now, in a variety of ways, in terms of extra meetings and different things going on, and the search going on, and all this different stuff. So, you know, I think we need to think about that.
Yeah, this is a new problem. I mean, if we run into this on, on any event. My thought was, and I mentioned it, Meredith, at the deliberative session, I went through her presentation materials, and there were two pieces of paper in there that, that solved the teacher's contract for me. And it was the comparison of the, the other, that did it. And so to get that piece, I mean, that just did it for me.
To get it in the mail, to be able to look at it.
I, I don't know what you can do, but I'm saying, I thought that was.
Well, and that, the thing with that is, that's two years ago data. We're talking about a future year with data from a year ago.
But even, but even so, anybody that has a focus on, has a business focus is, to, to have that disparity in comparative wages, it's not probably a good idea. The one I struggle with more is the, is the default, because I don't know how far to go with it personally. I mean, I don't want to be a position out there where, you know, Al's like said.
Right.
You know, be careful about the default budget.
Well, that's, that's why I think we need to have a unified, combined message from the district that is a fact-based, because that is what we are called to do.
Well, should we have Meredith throw something together, throw it, throw it together, and then we can. Well, should we have Meredith throw something together, throw it, put it together, and then we can put it into our terms, but something that's gonna go out in the mail? Like, that, we might have to-
Can you?
Do we have time for that and money?
Mike, I think, I think the information is already-
We have, we have the data.
I mean, well, well, Meredith put it together, I mean, it's like, if, 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 if the default budget is passed as the budget, then these things, we're gonna have to find money for the SRO, the, you know, psychology, it's like, there's a whole list of them, you know, but, you know, so-
And we won't be able to take it out of the operating budget.
Question I had as I was watching for things about the deliberative session, is the school not allowed to publish things on that e-newsletter from the town?
We have.
We have, we have.
And we will.
The search committee is in there.
Yeah, we would. In that, in that case, that would be a source to disseminate information.
When they were announcing the vacancies for the town, they didn't announce the vacancies for the school district. So, I've noticed that there've been some gaps in there, and I didn't know whether that wa, if there were limitations on the kinds of information that we could publish in there.
Well, again, I mean, I think Kim said it several times, I think your major challenge is just to make sure you're informing, not persuading.
Right, yes, right.
So, yeah, I think-
So, I think that, at this point, and we're at, we're adding several things on to the twenty-first, but I think the first step is utilizing documents that were sent a while ago, and I can resend them, to, to see where they fit, to determine what the situation is, and then determine the things-
Can we, can we send out those documents that Meredith already did?
Yeah, I'll send them again.
For example, the, the teachers thing, and can we, as a-
She, she emailed that to us last-
No, 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 I've got a different question.
Oh.
Can we, as a school board, email it to citizens, uh, mail it to citizens?
Mail it.
Mail it.
On, from your Gmail account?
No, mail.
Oh, mail it, mail it, mail it.
I mean, I don't know that, I don't think we want to get into, even, even, I think we need to come up with a unified document that the district is sending out as opposed to individual school board members.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking, right.
The presentation is public information, so anything that's included in that can be distributed.
And we can, we can send it to people's homes.
Put it in the snail's home. Yes.
Yes?
You could.
I think that would be a good first step, because I think the average person that opens their mailbox up and sees, here are a couple of important issues that are coming up. One is the teacher's contract, we'd like you just to review these, this, and we'd like you to review what the impact would be of a default budget.
Are, are you asking the question, can the school district forward those as email to the-
Mail, mail, mail.
So, we've often, when we've had big items like this, we've put together a brochure and sent it out, and you, I'm sure you've had some-
We did it the last time with the building.
Right. Is that, would that be a possibility?
That's why I think I just, I asked Meredith to put something together, and then if we can, on the twenty-first, look at it and say, "Mail it." That's what we're gonna have to do.
Costs money.
Costs money, yeah. What was the cost on that, that flyer that, that was four pages we sent out when we did the school building?
It's a thousand dollars in that range.
How much?
A thousand dollars, somewhere in that range.
Gonna have to do it, we have to-
I think we should do it.
And, and put, you know, ways to contact us and to ask questions.
We, uh, last time around, we got the address list from the town, and then there's a mail company that, that you can-
Okay.
So, Meredith, will you, will you, will you guys coordinate that for the twenty-first?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll take-
And just have it ready to go, and then we'll just, we'll, yeah, send it out.
And that, that same document can be emailed and sent a variety of different ways, so.
Yeah, I do, I, I, again-
And I think it's, I think it's, I think it's probably maybe one page, or it could be both sides, or-
Yeah.
But does, just, just ver, an executive summary.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and, you know, for more information, psh, go here, whatever.
You know, and-
And we'll have the links on the website, get Jason to put all the links on there, any questions?
And it shows on, it shows up in everybody's mailbox one day, so I think it's-
All right. Any other, any other thoughts on that? Yes, Ingrid.
Are the school updates going out with regular, or, I should ask, how frequently are the school updates going out? Because I asked, because I've signed up for it, and I think the last thing I got directly-
It's December.
Was Decem, yeah.
That's accurate. We haven't had an administrative assistant for the month of January, so, as I was doing those tasks, that was not a priority.
Okay, yeah.
So, we have one, she's four days into her work now. Um, hopefully, uh, that will last for the next couple of months, and we can get back to some regularity with that, but you have to prioritize.
Well, basically, I was wondering if, if my name had dropped off the mailing list, and if that mailing list is something that we could use to send it out to-
We still have it, selective.
Non-parent types like me.
Yeah, those who've subscribed, right, to our MailChimp list, yep.
Right, right. Because if they've indicated that interest, they're more likely to read it too.
All right. Lisa, I think we're prepared for you to do your quarterly-
So, I printed, perhaps you can see that now. So, this quarter is through December. And since then, um, right now, I was forecasting a surplus of one eighty-five. I believe it's, um, a range of fifty to sixty thousand dollars worse, based on, um, some information I received about an additional severance payout to be made, some of the fees that I just heard here, I just kind of added another ten thousand dollars into that. And, um, at the time when I initially did this, the SRO, what I was being billed at, uh, I had to have a true-up. So, the SRO number, when you look halfway down, or actually, uh, a quarter of the way up from the bottom, that number will be about thirty-five thousand dollars worse than what I had on here.
So, can you maybe walk us back from the top?
Oh, sure, sure. So, I was going right to the bottom initially, saying we're in a surplus position, which is, um, forecast to be about hundred and twenty-five thousand to one hundred and thirty-five thousand to the good. And honestly, that is less than one, that's less than point one percent of the total budget, so it's, it may seem like a lot of money, but it's close. So, going back to the top, the eleven hundred, uh, regular ed is showing a surplus, because there were a number of, um, there were things budgeted in there that needed to be realigned to the administrative account for changes in our assistant principals, and also, uh, special ed, there was a, a piece there. Twelve hundred, the same thing. So, we're showing a surplus there, but also there's a number of vacancies that have not been filled in the, uh, special ed, in the, in the para area. And change in staff is also, um, an issue between eleven hundred and twelve hundred, why we have a surplus there. The fort, uh, I put my glasses on, sorry.
I've got spares.
The, um, uh, thirteen hundred is the vote, and there was a rate increase, but we had less students than we originally forecasted. So, we're looking for a surplus based on the budget there. Fourteen hundred, um, there was a change in staff, and we had a additional tutor position that was not filled on the fourteen hundred. The next material item is as you head down to psychology, twenty-one forty, um, is a change of staff.
I was just gonna note, the tutor, those funds were reallocated to the SRO based on the vote of the board last spring.
Yep, so, the position, the dollars were added back into the budget, but that will be, um, used to offset the SRO deficit there. Um, I will plan to bring transfers to you for the next meeting. I didn't want to do the transfers now, I wanted to show you where everything kind of went on the budget, and then I'll bring transfers that will realign some of these dollars on the budget for future, as we head towards the end of the year. The other twenty-two, ten improvement of instructions, significant dollars there, surplus had to do with the change in staff, the, um-
Assistant superintendent.
Assistant superintendent position eliminated, and that was realigned to the twenty-four-ten and, and, uh, the two-three-three-two, which you'll see later on is in the deficit. Uh, technology, if you recall, we didn't budget for replacement equipment, so I'm forecasting a hundred thousand dollars, um, of an issue, but we still have our capital, our expendable trust fund if we need to, as we go towards the end of the year.
So, that's assuming that all of that would be absorbed out of operating budget, without having, your, your total bottom line is assuming we wouldn't touch the trust, but that money is still available.
To touch the, the trust. So, that's the difference right now. Um, the twenty-three-ten is where the severance, the additional, um, monies, uh, not, not known at the time of the budget, for, um, some teachers who, um, announced retirement.
And you're saying there may be one more there that's not accounted for?
Yes, one more on that one. Uh, the two-three-three-two and the two-twenty-four-ten on the next page, those deficits I mentioned earlier, um, were, were realigned from other accounts. Um, building maintenance, you'll see I forecasted a hundred thousand dollars in there, and also, um, bleacher replacement, I forecasted. It might actually be another, I had sixty-seven thousand at the time, but I think it's seventy-three thousand, the bleacher. Uh, so, since I did this, uh, it's, it's going to be a little worse. Uh, special ed-
What's the, what's the, the, I thought-
One sixty-seven?
Yeah, wasn't the, didn't we add?
We had, we had talked about potentially using capital reserve funding for the bleachers, but again, we're forecasting that we wouldn't need to at this point. Um, similarly, for that, again, the sewer repairs that we just talked about tonight, Lisa embedded those in this forecast, embedded that hundred thousand dollars into this forecast, so that's already accounted for here.
Do we have monies in the project for bleachers?
No, no.
I thought we added some, no?
No, because, uh, that, our intent was to potentially use the capital reserve funds.
But to the extent we don't need to, um, I'm having there. Um, special ed, when the original budget was done, there was a, um, anticipated, uh, extra transportation needed, but the student remained in the district, so, um, we're looking that we might underrun that by twenty thousand. And then, at the end, food service is just where we're at right now, just for, um, student, um, unpaid-
Lunch balances, yeah.
Lunch balances. I haven't forecasted any other deficits due to, um, salaries and benefits.
And Lisa, the quarter, the fund, uh, the forecast remaining in the first quarter was what, how much?
I had one eighty-five, but I think realistically, it's closer to another fifty to sixty thousand worse.
He's asking first quarter.
Oh, first quarter, I'm sorry, um-
We wouldn't have had the hundred thousand in at that point, so it was at least a hundred thousand higher, and-
Yeah, we would've only had almost one month of expense, July and August, um, teachers aren't here, things are getting encumbered, so it would've been a tougher, um, forecast. I, I don't recall what I had for the number, to be honest.
So, based upon the decision that we made earlier in terms of the sewer line?
Yes.
We would be, if we're down fifty?
It's already in there.
It's built in.
Ah, okay.
It's built in.
So, that ninety-nine is already allocated in this?
Ten to twenty-six hundred.
This assumes that all the other building maintenance comes right in on forecast, and the only issue will be absorbing sewer and bleachers.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, ninety-nine and seventy-three gives us the one sixty, or, okay.
So, I had it, yeah.
So, we've got a sixty-seven, but now we know it's seventy.
Conversation with the facilities director to look at all these other budget lines, um, pro, um, the propane switch over and, um, where we are in water and sewer, all the other utilities, uh, look like we're going to come in on, on, uh, budget. So, the only issue for that right now remains those.
So, again, you're projecting right now, with the sewer already accounted for, a fund balance of between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to the good, and that does not include, as of right now, tapping into the technology capital reserve or the building repair and maintenance capital reserve?
Correct.
Wait, that's a, that's a one twenty-five, it's a tiny, tiny number on a-
But we're in February, and we know most of our expenses.
It's less than point one percent, it's small, um-
Well, I hope so.
But, we'll continue to monitor it.
But again, we, a, and that hundred thousand dollar deficit in technology, if we get to the end of the year, would come out of the capital reserve. Some of that money for building, repair, and maintenance could come out of that capital reserve, right? I mean, that's, you don't typically go to those until you're at the end of your fiscal year, but, but assume you've got at least another couple hundred thousand dollars available to you should you need to go there. It's February, I mean-
On a nineteen million dollar budget, to have a hundred thousand dollars left, it's, good, I hear you.
Any other questions on Lisa's financial, quarterly financial report?
That's our forecast.
That's a-
It's not how much we have on hand right now. Don't worry.
I know, but-
The next item on our agenda is shared services. Um, Meredith and I met with Dale and Steve, whose name I almost lost, a little bit ago, and Meredith, um, brought a recommendation to that group, um, in terms of moving forward with shared services, and, um, I would, wanted her to discuss that with the full board and her thoughts in that.
Sure. So, uh, Lisa's here, um, so she can certainly chime in. Um, the, um, challenge of managing forty million dollar, um, project, um, on top of additional projects on the town side, on top of implementing a huge financial software package, on top of training up new staff on both sides, is, is having Lisa working fifty, sixty-hour weeks on a good week. Um, I just don't see that as sustainable for a school district, for employees, if, from a retention perspective, um, and, and I don't see an end to that in the near term. And, you know, Lisa's not been complaining, I don't mean to suggest that, um, the work is getting done, but I think that, um, it, it, it's difficult. It's difficult to, um, uh, do the full range of the aspects of her job in a thorough and complete way while balancing, uh, those additional needs. Um, I think that, that, uh, she's not able to do some of those pieces of the job that, um, really benefit our, our future planning and our, our growth, um, in the sense that she, you know, it's difficult to carve out time to really sit down with an administrator and review their budget in line item detail and talk about all the ins and outs of the things that they're trying to, to plan for in the upcoming year, and help them think about ways that they might be able to shift those resources. I'm able to have those conversations with people, but typically, your business administrator would be part of those conversations. Um, and I'm not gonna speak to the, to the town side of things, I can really only speak to the school side. Um, you know, bu, budgeting process, right? It's the timing of having both of those come due, really within a couple of weeks of each other, is, is challenging. Um, you know, Lisa is not able to devote time, for example, um, we had a meeting the other day, really looking at the details of the infrastructure fund and the invoicing that we're gonna need to do back to the state for that. But, but Greg and his assistant are collecting some of those pieces, I'm monitoring some of those pieces, Lisa's monitoring some of those pieces, they're not really the most efficient way, and I think it leaves Lisa as the person responsible for the financial oversight, probably feeling uncomfortable at times that she can't be on top of everything simultaneously. Um, so, my, my recommendation, um, to Kim and Dale and Steve when we met, and to you as a board, is that you consider, um, having a full-time business administrator. I think that would be achievable within your budgeted funds for next year, it would mean shifting some responsibilities potentially within that office, having a full-time business administrator, of, of potentially, um, one full-time and one part-time employee, um, on the school district side in order to accomplish those tasks.
And obviously, this is a discussion item, so that's what we're doing tonight. I mean, this is, uh, a recommendation that has been made, um, by Meredith in terms of sustainability moving forward. It is ultimately our decision in conjunction with the town, and also, we need to determine, i- if the decision were to eliminate the shared service in that regard, their guidelines in terms of the contract for the allegations we have with the town, so it would not be that, but it's just a, a beginning of discussion, um-
Well, if we have to look for a BA, we should, it's another one of those things you need to get the hat out.
We have a BA.
No, she's saying she, you're going, you're gonna-
Well, I work for the school district right now, that's who I'm employed by.
Okay, 'cause I was understood that.
Yeah, no, we have a BA.
There's a six-month, um, termination clause, um, in terms of notice to the town if you decide to accept the shared service agreement.
Who, who, who's gonna check it out?
No problem.
So, when you're saying one and a half, you're saying, uh, one for us and half for the-
I'm only talking about the school side, and I'm suggesting that you could probably accomplish it.
Okay. Okay. One and a half for the school side.
The proposal would be to look at accomplishing that within the existing budgetary fund, so having a business administrator and one and a half other employees with- so having a business administrator and one and a half other employees within the business office, as opposed to two full-time.
So Lisa stays, and then we hire, we have Teresa, and then we hire a half, is that what we're saying?
Well, I, I'm not getting into employee specifics, I'm talking about the structure of the office.
Can you talk more about it, because I'm not getting it in there.
I guess I'm missing it.
Right, so right now, we share our BA slash finance director, have two full-time employees in that office. We would go to a full-time BA, and then one and a half employees.
No, I'm still not getting.
Support employees in addition to the BA, one, uh, and another full-time employee and another half-time employee.
Well, I'm, I, but I?
To staff the business office, the BA's office.
But I don't, I, I don't understand the implication on shared services. Are you suggesting that we go back to the original non-shared services in finance?
In finance.
I, um, I'm going to carefully react. Um, the last time we had a meeting with the town and the, and the school, which was in August to September, the report from both sides were, was very positive, things are working well. Lisa's spending a lot of time now on the implementation on the town side, because that's occurring. We're thinking about doing some additional, we're looking to the future to do some additional shared services. We went through a whole budget process, this thing never came up, and to, I, you say it did?
I, I called for a shared services meeting to address it, because it was a very difficult fall.
See, see?
I called for a meeting with the chairs and with, with Steve to address it, because it was a difficult fall. Yeah, I understand.
I, I can't talk to that.
And Al, honestly, this, the day that we had that meeting, it was on our agenda to discuss it that night. I was requested not to have that conversation, because one of the members of the meeting wanted to speak to the employee in question.
I, I, I get all that, and I don't, I don't want to get into the details, but I'm sitting here saying, what? We just had this meeting, the focus of that meeting was shared services. And we walked out, I walked out saying, there are some things to work on here, certainly, but they're working together to look at future opportunities. And now, it's five months later, say, well, the thing's not working, to me, um, is, at the very least, terrible communication with boards. And, and, uh, to, uh, the, the comment that, you, you can't speak for Steve, and I agree with that, you can't. This has, this has been a combined project between the town and the school, and not to have Steve part of this discussion, to me, is, um, disappointing. And I don't care, I'm not a, I, I am kind of a shared services guy, no question about it, everybody knows it, but this is not disappointing.
I mean, and Al, the decision might be that we, because everything remains the same.
No, no, but I'm, I, I, as a board member, I'm disappointed that things are running great, and then the next meeting about those things, it's not running great. Uh, something, obviously something happened.
Well, my question, I guess, would be, um, I guess it's workload and sequencing of workload, kinds of issues that could very easily not have been an issue when we had that conversation, and then all of a sudden, we get into that part of the cycle that piles on, and you can't, and you can't really foresee that until you've been through that and say, oh my God, I thought I could manage that, but it's, all these things come in, and we don't have much control, as I understand it, about when everybody's budget cycle come. We can't say, we have one person, we need to do the town budget cycle here, and the school budget cycle here, because that balances out the workload, or can we? I guess I need to ask some questions, so that I better understand workload and work cycle, yeah, statutory, isn't it?
States for, for budget are very similar for both entities. Um, I guess in reacting to your comments, Al, I think I called for that shared services meeting in late November, um, for the joint chairs meeting with Steve. Steve's been part of these conversations, Steve's aware of my recommendations, Steve has had time to think about this. Ultimately, the shared service agreement for this position does rest with the board. Um, and, and, believe me, I'm a person who also values shared services, but I also think it's not, uh, that part of my job as an administrator is to recognize the workload for employees, and I don't think that a sixty-plus hour week with a task list that's still as long as your arm is sustainable for, for an employee. And I, I know you're not arguing that, um, and I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm sorry you feel there's been a lack of communication. I tried to take the steps that are, are really laid out in that agreement, which is to go through the chairs, if, if there's a, a concern that, that can't be resolved, and it has been until now that this has risen to a board agenda item.
To have that meeting in September, and, and call for a shared services discussion in November, it's not the impression that the leadership in the town and the school left with me.
And in September, I don't think that was our impression. I think we were optimistic that we were going to be able to manage these challenges. And the, the software implementation has continued to, to grow. Um, it's still a year plus, uh, almost away from, from completion. Um, it's been delayed, there have been challenges related to that, and again, I'm not trying to speak to the town side, but that has had implications for us. Um, the town has also added, um, financing and, and work leading up to additional twelve million dollars' worth of bond issues that were not on the, the list, um, when we started meeting in September. Those didn't come up until we approached the budget cycle. Uh, at, the employee changes that have occurred on both sides were also, um, we knew one was coming for us. Uh, but the one on the town was not anticipated, and again, tho- all of those pieces add up. Um, a- and so I, I've done my best to communicate that as those things arose, and I, again, I'm, I'm, it's not an intent to un- not inform people or mislead anyone, I've been pretty straightforward, um, with my concerns, and, um, ultimately, this is a, this is a board decision. I'm simply trying to provide you information so that you can do what you think is best for the needs of the town.
And I, Meredith, I don't, I don't doubt that. I'm disappointed with the process, that's all I can say. Very, extremely disappointed with the process.
My question would be, it sounds like there are a couple of those pieces that might be the construction project, the, the software download that are going to take time, somewhat unpredictable time, but that if we look at adding positions or positions, that they wouldn't necessarily be indefinite. That s- some of that, when that workload shifts down, is, am I understanding that correctly? That when the workload for the, the construction is not there, and when the new personnel are trained, uh, in both offices, that we might be able to say we need one and a half now, but might shift back to one at some point in the future, or, or half in the future?
So we have two now, and a shared BA slash finance director. Um, I, I guess, are you saying, as an alternative to add an additional staff person, I suppose it is, that isn't budgeted? Um, I'm, I'm suggesting instead, uh, something that could be accomplished within your operating funds, which is not sharing the service, but reducing the number of employees on the school side, because I think in a more focused way, right? Uh, that a, that a person with a higher level of experience, plus one and a half people, could accomplish the same work on the school side.
What, what have been the challenges with the, um, implementation of the software, and is this typical? That it would take so long, it almost seems like the cure is worse than the, than the old.
I don't know if Lisa wants to get into the detail of that in this meeting, um, because it's really not a, a school issue, but it is, it has been, um, a lengthy process of training with the vendor, and?
Well, I mean, it is, because it's affecting your workload.
And, and without getting to my performance in public and all, and talking about how I've tried to accomplish a lot of this, it, it isn't sustainable in doing all these things to the, you know, to the, um, I work to the best of my ability, but I, I expect certain kind of perfection for myself, that I haven't been able to work in a way that I feel is, is my best, in, in supporting others as well. You know, because a big part of my job is to support the administrators in the school, and I don't have the opportunity to do that.
So you're asking us to, to split the position, or consider splitting the position? No lo- not splitting it.
It's not really about that, it's about the shared services.
So no more shared services?
For this job.
For this job. So we don't have to worry about the town side, we, on our side, we're looking at just keeping what we have. And you're asking us to, to give the six-month notice to the town?
I, I'm certainly asking for a discussion about that.
Again, can I, just, just a few more questions, and, um, you know, about, 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 about the software? Because that, that's one thing I've heard tonight, is, is, is affecting the workload. Um, and I don't need to know every little detail, but just, so to be, it'd be interesting to know what the nature of the problem is, and, and, and when, when the, that might be, I mean, you just mentioned maybe another year, a year and a half?
I'm, I'm the project manager for the software implementation. If we were to have someone manage that whole project, could I get back to where I was, perhaps? But there's still other things that, that have come up.
Like what?
On the town, is, is, is work that I have to do in support of the, the finances for the town. So? That I know the town administrator's working on, the facilities director's working on, where I would normally be doing that.
And, and I'm just trying to understand, because we put a lot of, you know, in, in, I don't know ultimately what the right decision is. I mean, we need to ask these questions, Lisa, so just take it in that vein, um, of, of just trying to understand the problem before we make a decision. It is that, um, so the software is an issue at some point, we hope, whether it's?
Yes, but?
The town's issue eventually, again, solely, or, or ours, and, uh, um, and, and I don't know a lot about that. I didn't know if we were sort of giving a, a new system for us as well, on the school side, no? We aren't obso- we aren't going obsolete with?
That is not?
It's in five years out or so in your capital improvement plan.
I see, okay. And then, and then on, on the, on the construction side, I mean, that, that's another year, little over a year, year and a half done. I guess what I'm wondering is, uh, you, I'm sure you've given this consideration, Meredith, as well as, is, and perhaps Steve has, as well as, is temporary, uh, is temporary staffing increase to get over this hump?
Um, yes, I've been told I can find, find the person or people to do that. So I've been offered, yes, we can get you some help, support, find the people to do that. Um, it's taken me some time to recruit someone to fill a vacancy on the town. And the same, getting someone up to speed on the school, so where I haven't been able to focus as much, and, uh?
Lisa, given you've been through a full cycle now, and you've been through a budget season where you're handling both, and you've also been through a season where you, you've been dropped, like, you know, a couple of bond issues that you weren't anticipating it to be in the year. If, if the, if the software thing was done, you know, fully implemented, and folks were trained on that?
It was still a difficult budget season.
And, and the, and the school construction thing is over, can you foresee a shared services arrangement working at that point? Or is it still too much?
I, I, I wasn't prepared to speak to that, I'll, I'll need some more time to think about that, but?
Yeah, I guess my question was going to be, are we basically saying, um, we're at a point where we have to say no more shared services on, on this position at all, that it's just not viable anymore, and, and so we need to, we need to go back?
I've competing priorities a number of times, and challenging the employee and?
Yeah, I think it's important to remove Lisa from this discussion, because we're talking about this position. Yes, she's the person that's in this position right, and this is just for all of us. I think it's difficult for us to say?
Exactly, yeah.
Justify, or validate, or duck, you know, it's just difficult for us to do that, and I don't know.
It's true, and I, and I, I hope my, my, my questions weren't taken, is that I just, just trying to understand what the workload is.
Well, a person in this position has competing priorities, and we acknowledged that when we set up the agreement. We said, town administrator, superintendent, they'd have to talk it out and decide. But sometimes, those things, they're both just as important, and there's been a lot of compromising, and who knows how it will be for the future too, I, you know, it's, it's, um?
I think one thing we have to think about also from our side, and, is that, you know, we don't know who is going to sit in this position next also. So I don't know, you know, timing-wise, you know, I think Meredith, one of Meredith's motivations, and I, I don't want to speak to it totally, was, is the fact that she is leaving, and this is something that she wanted to address prior to that time, so I think, but I think we have to weigh that into it too. And I, and, you know, obviously, this decision is not going to be made tonight, there are a lot of variables in, in this discussion, um, and this is just the first?
Yeah.
Foray into it.
And I, and I should have prefaced anything I said by saying that, and I, I guess I'll speak for the board, kind of unofficially here, but none of us, I would think, would want to have any employee in a situation where they're overwhelmed.
Absolutely not, I mean, absolutely, I agree, yeah.
I mean, just for their own personal?
Yeah.
Reasons, and, and, and just, you know, it doesn't produce the best results for the district, so, but?
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, I, I, I think that that piece, Mike, again, I don't want to speak for Meredith's total motivation, but I think, you know, aside from supporting in the way that that office does and should, I think that the, the human part of it is, is a valid part of it too. Um, you know, no one needs to be run into the ground, because it's not good for them as people, and it's not good for operations overall either.
No, you're used to working sixty or seventy hours a week during budget season, that's not unusual, fifty or sixty, not sixty or seventy. But to do it continuously is asking too much. But I just, I guess I just need to clarify a few things.
Yeah, I mean, this is just the beginning of this conversation, we will continue discussing it, um, get feedback from Meredith, you know, and I, and I think that we'll see what the decision is ultimately, in terms of moving forward.
So what, are we looking for more information to come down? What are we, the discussion, we started the discussion, where do you want the discussion to go from here?
I mean, I think, you know, I think there's some logistical concepts in my, in my mind, and again, I might be speaking out of school. You know, fiscally, how does this happen, if this decision is there? Um, administratively, and, and again, Meredith's responsible for, for doing the workflow, but I think for my own edification, not that I need to know who those people are, or what that situation is, but just sort of, can we effectively do this again if we were to remove ourselves from that? And what are the implications cost-wise, quality of life-wise, performance-wise, outcomes? I'm just saying words at this point, but you know what I mean. Um, that's sort of what I'm thinking, in terms of, of more facts to determine what the best decision is for us. Um, you know, one of those things, honestly, aside from everything else, is the budgetary piece of things. You know, we've been told that we can effectively achieve the requirements of that office with a business manager and, and one and a half more people, if I'm iterating that properly. Um, just sort of those things, I think, is what I would be moving forward to, to make a uninformed decision on this. Any other thoughts?
All right.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
It, it is not easy for an employee who, um, is working really hard to say it's not working.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I appreciate that Lisa's in a difficult position, not wanting to say that to either supervisor, and wanting to do the best work for this community that she possibly can. Um, so know that, this isn't a, a, a recommendation that is made lightly. Um, it, it is trying to look at the big picture, and again, I, part of what I was trying to do is look at, within existing resources, what can be accomplished. I certainly, you know, hear the point, could we add another person for the next year plus? Yes, potentially, um, but there are some things that, uh, a support person can't do, because they don't have the level of expertise and background knowledge that, that the administrator would have. But, a- again, those are all pieces to weigh, and we can certainly provide you?
If you're looking to hire a part-time BA, we might as well just really look at it in all seriousness. And I appreciate you surrendering, I appreciate you saying, I can't. I, I would rather have it, I would rather have a human in, saying that than anything else. So don't ever take anything that this board says that directed at you.
And I, I think many of us have seen you here extended hours, um, and doing different things, and going, I, I, I know for a fact for myself, I have seen that. Again, I'm speaking to you, but in the position, I know that you've been working your hardest. Any other thoughts on this at this point?
I guess, just to go back to my question again, is, basically, as I understand it, we're saying it doesn't work the way we thought it would work, and we want to restructure it, and, so I guess what I need from both of you is, uh? And so I guess what I need from both of you is, I guess I'm very visual. I'm always been a visual learner. A plan for what you think that restructuring would be. And unfortunately, you're the ones who had to live through the trial period. Does this work? How do we make it work? How do we, how do we look at it? And so, yeah, any, any ideas on the restructure? How do
In the month, in the
Not only the restructure, but how do we go about getting to that restructure? Sign out that that six months notice to the town if that's what we have to do and and some of those logisticals. Thank you.
Let me tell you, my disappointment is not with you. I don't want, I don't, I know what you're doing and I know how hard you're working. And I also appreciate you bringing it up because we, you know, it's a dysfunctional organization doesn't become functional. Uh, and it's, um, let me just, let me just say that.
It's just not sustainable working at a certain
Right, right.
On the shared service front too, I'll just remind you that one of the pieces we had talked about adding down the line was was HR. And at one point, we had thought about, was that something that could be accomplished with existing personnel? Or would we add a shared position? I mean, I still think that really is a viable and necessary piece to look at moving forward. So for me, this is not about taking shared services off the table unilaterally. It's really trying to think about what makes sense for the school district from a business perspective because that's my first priority. And it's, again, it's not, it's not trying to undermine the town by any means. I think I I think we've worked really hard to meet our obligation on on both sides here and 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 to absorb as much as we can on our side to to help mitigate some of the challenges that Lisa has faced, but
And you know, my experience in 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 financial services, uh, you're running a very unique organization because you're a business manager and you're a financial manager. And I've always kind of wondered why those get locked together the way they do. Same thing with HR, you know, how do you, how do you ever think of the concept of putting all that stuff together? So I would encourage thought about, uh, perhaps changing the job content as a as an opportunity to consider before disassociating the two organizations. In other words, someone with a focus on the business side, somebody with a focus on the finance side. As a, as a thought.
All right. Thank you for that robust discussion. Moving along and, you know, we, um, Mike, um,
Did you put this agenda here?
I decided that I was going to have an all-nighter. I thought we would, I was sort of playing around when we were talking about maybe moving some things around. You guys can tell me what you thought about that. But, um, we have on the agenda to talk about policy KF, which is the use of buildings and school building and facilities policy. Um, one of, one of the things that we talked about early in the meeting was that the new gym is open. Great, it's beautiful, people want to use it. There have been some concerns raised about the process by which assignments are made and use of the gym. And 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 Mike, uh, reached out and suggested that we sort of address, look at the policy KF that deals with that. And his, his, his question to me was whether that should be something that's done in the policy committee um, to bring back to the board for approval or whether we should do it in public meeting. My inclination and the reason why it's on the agenda was, given the fact that the public is dealing with this policy maybe more than they do others, I felt it was something that should be discussed by the group as a whole in a meeting. We are now getting into the week, small hours of the night. I'm not sure if anyone has has had a chance to look at policy K, uh, KF in any depth. Um,
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if
I looked at it, but I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about it in terms of the preface that you just made.
We, what what we can do if is amenable to the board, we have a policy meeting next week. Meredith, Ingrid and I do on, is it Wednesday? Whatever day it is, it's next week.
Tuesday, I think it is.
Would you like for us to address, look at that policy in that meeting and return to the board with that specifically? Some thoughts that we have on maybe amending it?
Yeah, no, I think so. I appreciate that, Kim. I I in just, and I think the, I think Meredith and 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 Sean and and others have done a good job. And since I raised this sort of triaging, the immediate issues of use, I mean, it's a, it's a great problem.
It's a great problem to have.
Good facility and everybody wants to use it. And, you know, our policy, I don't think is, you know, addressed to it. It's sort of, it it really says on a first come, first served basis.
Right.
And, um, you know, we'll we'll figure it out. And I think there are several aspects to it. If I could plant a few seeds, it's it's priority of usage. I think there's some logic to to coming up with that, obviously, school first, school programs first, perhaps town or, you know, and there's that issue. And then, um, there's sort of the administrative issue. So principals and and their assistants aren't pulling their hair out, dealing with requests and scheduling and having to, you know, that be more of a burden than it needs to be. And and so that's sort of the administrative part of, you know, um, I know we, Greg mentioned some software we have, but I can't remember what it is, Meredith, that that we're looking into.
School due?
Something, something like that.
Do they have that for them?
It's a different title now, but it's, yes.
Instead of filling out paper forms and, you know, all that sort of stuff, this this has got to be a better way to to administrate it.
Okay.
And so those are, those are some thoughts I I had in mind, but I, um, I I I do applaud the the ability, um, oh, not the ability, but the the effort so far to accommodate, you know, people's multiple requests to use that space. And I, you know, I think we're going to have a similar good problem when we open up other spaces like the stage and the either cafeteria and the, you know.
You know, I I think the the good thing with this is if we if we look at that in this context with the first issue, by the time we get to the subsequent issues, the policy's in place and updated so we can hit the ground running for the rush of theater that's going to be happening on the cafeteria stage.
Who who would have thought three years ago we'd have a problem of this problem? It's a good one to have, so. But, yeah, yes, Kim.
I was also surprised to hear that, uh, the facilities department is doing the scheduling. That that's really kind of surprised me. I, I, I think it's a thought that maybe the people within the school who understand the priorities would be, would be a better focus.
They do initial approvals and then it's only comes over here after that for us to maintain, um, the forms so we can notify custodial staff and track that insurance information is provided.
It's, it's actually a pretty
Yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense.
You know, then just
Those follow-up administrative things.
Yeah, we, I mean, we know what's on the schedule, but we maintain schedules for all the facilities through the facilities department anyway because custodians have to open doors and make sure things are cleaned out.
So the facilities department isn't making decisions.
They're not making the schedule.
Oh! So so the superintendent says, I'm going to be, I'm going to use it for recreation department two to four.
No, the the recreation department says, I'd like to use it from two to four. The building principal says it's available or it's not available.
Okay, oh, that's fine.
And follows the policy guidelines, which
Perfect, okay.
It notifies here so they can assign the total janitors.
So we will look at this in the policy committee and return with some thoughts based upon the recommendations that Mike has made. All right, approval of the minutes, and I've looked at the minutes and
Yeah, it's not, all I want to do is point out to you that memo, we're not asking you to make a decision tonight. Um, but there is in your packet a memo from Greg regarding the energy audit, the EEI piece that's in there. Um,
Thank you, Jen.
There is a recommendation for financing. I'm not, I I think that warrants some discussion because it's essentially a deferred deferred payment, and there may be other ways to accomplish that that I think are worth, are worth considering. So we wanted to give you the opportunity to look at the information ahead of time, share any questions with us so that you can make a decision at the March meeting ideally.
That was just the one thing, Meredith, you hit upon. I just, you know, typically, when you finance things, it costs you more in the end. And, you know, it seems great, oh, jeez, we don't got to pay now because of the savings and whatever, but, you know, are we, are we really getting a raw end to this deal? So that's my high-level question, you know?
I think I know who's been listening to it. Building committee.
So if there are any questions that you guys have about that, please forward them to Meredith to get with Greg to get those answered so we can make a decision in the March meeting.
And Lisa.
And Lisa.
He's trained us well, hasn't he?
Normally Lisa.
Yeah.
Um, if we move on to action items, approval of the minutes, I've looked at the the, um, minutes and we sort of have two different groups of minutes. For the January third minutes, everyone was here but Al, so we can look at those in one thing. And the January fourteenth, seventeenth and fourteen, seventeenth and seventeenth, Al and Ingrid were not here. So ju- so we're just going to do approval of the January third regular business meeting and non-public minutes. I I seek a motion to approve those two.
Someone.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Kennison and a second from, um, Ms. McKinney to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Um, any abstentions? Four approve, one abstention on those. And then I seek a motion to approve the special business meeting minutes from January fourth and the workshop and special business meeting minutes and non-public meeting minutes from January seventeenth.
So what?
We have a motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Mr. Kennison to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Abstentions?
Aye.
Two. Okay, approval of the manifests. Who's the lucky winner of the manifest?
Bury the manifests.
Oh goodness, I thought I had signed everything last week. Uh, I move the to- uh, the total of manifests for payroll accounts receivables and bond payable manifest, the total is wow, one million, one hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and six cents.
So what?
I thought I was, I was, I thought I was moving.
We have a motion from Ms. Alberg and a second from Ms. McKinney to approve the manifests that's listed. All those in favor of approving the manifest say aye.
Aye.
Manifest approves. Um, in an effort to, um, reduce our time a little bit, we're going to, um, move the awarding of the special education transferation contract till the seventh. We don't need to work on that today. We do need to look at, um, the consideration to postpone the March twelfth professional day to the end of the school year. And Meredith, if you would give the rationale behind that, I would appreciate it.
Uh, well, I I think the the primary concern that we typically hear from people is the end of the school year. Um, as it is this year, our normal end of school would have been June twenty-first. It will now, uh, sorry, I have the wrong date in my head. I better open my calendar so I don't misspeak. One moment. Uh, normally, it would have been June twentieth. Uh, now, all, both schools would have an additional day on the twenty-first. And as of right now, we still have the additional sewer day for the elementary school on June twenty-fourth. That leaves us four viable days in that month, and we still have, you know, four to six weeks of possible snowstorms and interruptions ahead of us. Um, I did seek feedback from the teachers association. I spoke with the teacher leaders. I reached out to Link Together. Um, and somewhere I had feedback for you from the teachers association to share. That's probably not it. Um, I'll have to pull that up too. Uh, Link Together says, no problem. The teacher leaders, I think it was like thirteen to six or seven, um, in in support of that move. The administrative team over, overall, um, is in support of that change. I think the the feedback, and I want to be, um, clear, but I think the largely heard from the teachers association, um, related to the opportunity to do some of that work that otherwise, um, they don't get to do together. And it's the only full professional development day we have between now and the end of the year. But I want to pull up
So basically, the calendar as it lists now, that day, and partially because we weren't sure where the voting was going to take place.
Oh, right, sorry. That's that's what precipitated this even coming up as an issue to begin with. Originally, um, the town had asked us to have that day available for voting in the schools. We were told two or two weeks ago or so, um, that they were not going to use the schools. When they were preparing the warrant, they made the decision to use the town hall for voting. So that meant that we could, um, then have school on that day, which is, which just caused me to surface the question. Um, again, given that we have had, you know, a number of two-hour delays and we had had a couple of, um, snow days. So thank you for reframing that.
Unless we have our annual election day blizzard.
Um, comments from, um, these are, this is from the teachers association, comments from those in favor. They'd like us to consider staff being able to submit hours, um, for the PD as opposed to, um, being in the building on June twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth or twenty-eighth, as the case may be. Um, uh, since we're not sure what's to come in terms of snow and construction, it makes sense to move the snow day. Uh, another comment was that they liked that students would be able to get out a day earlier. Uh, opposition, feel like there wouldn't be enough time to work on some of the initiatives that has, that have been underway this year. Don't feel that working on them at the end of the year would be as productive, as many professionals work during the year um, rather than looking ahead when the school year's over. Uh, feels like a long time to go without professional development, um, for next day as in May. Uh, concerned about moving New Market University as there wouldn't be time to implement the new strategies if it takes place at the end of the year. Concerned about having time to meet about transitions and levels for students next year, which, my principals tells me is typically our May early release day. Uh, need the March day to develop competencies for next year. March day would be helpful for learning more about competencies. Uh, PD would be of more value now rather than the end of the year. So those are the comments on both sides. Again, you you have more the pulse on the parent perspective. So I just wanted to put it out there for discussion and consideration, again, given that our calendar runs so close to the end of June already.
Um, are we prepared to vote on this tonight or what are, what are the thoughts?
Do we need to vote on that tonight so that people can plan accordingly?
Since it's a month basically.
Just a month out, yeah.
Uh, well, do you need to? I mean, you could decide on the twenty-first and give people notice at that point. Um, you could ask for parental input. I mean, I'm I'm not sure, you know, what would be most helpful to you in in making this determination? We set our calendar. It was an account. It was just feedback.
Feedback, okay. The majority wanted the day or didn't want the day?
Of teachers in the association, I don't know the answer to that. She just shared feedback. The majority of teacher leaders and administrators would prefer to postpone it to the end of the year. And you heard the comments from teachers.
So my thought is that we, um,
Should just make a decision on it.
That's what I'd be.
Right? Do we need to debate it? I mean, like
Well, I just feel bad for the teachers.
Do we need any more info or?
I don't want to make a decision on their time. They're saying that they're they're concerned that things won't get done, that they need that professional day. That's my concern. But then
Do we have to make a decision on this sooner or later?
Sooner.
I seek a motion to, uh, postpone the March, uh, twelfth professional day to the end of the school year, making March twelfth as as instructional day for students.
I wonder if we should have the, uh, association here talk about it on the twenty-first.
This is one day, but
Yeah, it's one day.
So Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Kennison and a second for Mr. Zink to, uh, postpone the March twelfth professional development day to the end of the school year, making March twelfth now an instructional day for students. Any other discussion? We'll move to the vote. All those in favor of postponing that day say aye. Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Three to two. And Marilyn, or Marilyn. Meredith.
Communication out.
Thank you.
On that.
Um, the last
Postpone policy?
Yes, let's postpone policy till the next time. And I seek a motion to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one, A, colon, three, two, C.
And B.
And B. Uh, we have a, um, motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Mr. Kennison. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Ms. Alberg?
Aye.
Mr. Kennison?
Aye.
Ms. McKinney?
Aye.
Me. And we are in non-public session at nine forty-nine.